Good evening and welcome to the September 19th, 2023, meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order is rule call of members.
Yeah, President.
Masucci present.
Tessie, you're here.
Alan, present.
Triscoll here. We also want to mention that Donna Masucci, alternate member, will be a full voting member this evening. Also with us, we have the town planner Vanessa Price and John Huckins, zoning administrator. Next item is review and approval of minutes. Does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections, et cetera?
I move we approve the meeting minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Rule call, please.
Masucci, I.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan, I.
Triscoll, I. Next item is staff updates.
Good evening, everybody. Just another plug to take the housing survey and attend our community meeting coming up on September 30th at the ECLC. From 8:30 to 12 is the meeting for the Housing Master Plan Chapter. Also, just wanted to give a quick update to the board and that there's some changes that came through legislature. Specifically, that would probably affect us the most is for the Senate Bill 78. And that's just in updating surety. We kind of already, I've already sent it to our attorneys to review our regulations to make sure that we're in compliance with the new regulations that go in effect October 3rd. Is make sure that we allow more than one type of surety, which we already do. Cannot do auto recalls anymore, which we do, so I'll have to get an updated form from the attorney. The cost escalation factors have been increased for 15 to 20 or 10%. I think the biggest bond or biggest thing is in relation to the bonds for the planning board must allow road and utility construction to start without a bond. However, a bond for infrastructure, including the roads and utilities, must be in place prior to any sale of parcel or an application for building permit for structures. Previously on planning boards, they could require a bond to be in place prior to commencement or any construction. And planning boards who like to guard against incomplete infrastructure that isn't bonded still have the option to require an onsite engineer to inspect infrastructure. Construction. And that's, I could entertain questions if you have questions, but I hopefully just to preempt you, our October 3rd agenda is super long, but if the attorney gets back to me, I would like the board to review just the surety section and agree or disagree with whatever changes she may or may not make. That way we can still be okay for newer construction since it goes into effect October 3rd.
The part that didn't change there. The part that didn't change that we've been addressing right along, if they want to get a building permit, they have to bond whatever's left anyways in order to get a building permit. So this only applies if they're doing the work without trying to get a building permit. Most people want to be able to sell lots and get building permits even when their road's not done. That's the reason why they bond. So I don't see a lot changing. I think that people are going to bond the stuff anyway so they can get their building permits. There is a caveat that they can't get a CO until the road is done to the planning board's level. Planning board in the past had did it to where the binder coat didn't have to be on that because, I mean, the wear coat didn't have to be on because they didn't want that done and still have construction work out there when the houses are being built. So I give COs without the wear coat, but they still have the bond for that and the maintenance bond that they carry for two years until the town decides whether or not they'll take the road over. So that stuff won't change at all.
Thanks. Next item, item number five is Class 6 Private Road Application. This is for 13 Castle Rock Road, Mam number 224, Lot 49, Category 2, a Class 6 Private Road. Does the planning department have any comments on this?
Mr. Chairman and to the board, I did send the agenda to the applicant and I believe, oh, right on time. I guess I will turn it back over to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Actually, we're ready to hear your case. Would you like to come up and just discuss?
You can get at the table or at the stand, whichever you feel comfortable with. But if you wouldn't mind pressing the button on there and it turns green, so that way we can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, this is for Category 2. There's no road upgrades because there's no dwelling stuff being added and there was another one that came before. The road actually meets the standard passed there anyways.
Okay. Yeah, is this working? Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm Tim Whitehouse. I have property over there on Castle Rock Road, 13 Castle Rock Road. And behind the mobile home, we took down a dilapidated storage building that was not serviceable anymore. So I'm looking to put some storage capability over there for lawn care and snow removal and that type of thing, garden and yard work tools, things of that nature. So I had put in a request to put up a storage building on a concrete pad to put my equipment and lawn care stuff in. I think we had it, I shrunk it down. I think it's now either 24 or 26 feet by 20 feet wide and it's just frame, frame two by six, OSB sheathing and on a concrete pad, monolithic style pad. I meet all the setbacks because I have a four acre lot out there and there's a mobile home in front nearer the road on Castle Rock, but I'm positioning that backs on a slight grade. There's a gravel road that comes off Castle Rock that I have the right of way to. So I guess the setback is needs to push back to 40 feet, but I have all that land back there, so setbacks aren't a problem. And there's no wet, wetland areas in the area where I wanted to put the pad. So I don't know if you had any other questions.
Any questions?
I guess the question I have is, you are not a member of the Road Association, is that?
I am a, I guess, yeah, I pay a fee every year for the snow removal over there. That's about my involvement. I haven't really done anything else there. With the, with the Road Association, they just send me a bill every year for their snow, you know, what they collect for people's snow removal.
More questions? Any questions from zoning administrator? Is there a motion to, Vanessa send this to the?
Require 10%.
You still send a recommendation to the select board that they be on the, basically it's the consent agenda, so it's a category two.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Do we agree? Do we vote?
For the record, I'd like a vote.
You'd like a vote? Okay, let's vote to send Vanessa send a letter to the?
Category 2.
Category 2.
Masucci, I.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan, I.
You're all set. As far as, more luck to stay. But you're all set. Are we on the next slide for? It's the second, I believe.
Second of October?
Yes.
So kind of when does the whole process?
So for October 2nd, it's kind of similar to her. It's on the consent, they ask you questions.
Also come back again.
But after that, then you.
Dr. Simon, you.
Oh, they finished.
They sign that.
Oh, okay. So that just that, that next meeting.
Have a good night.
Good night. Next item is 6A, Discussion on Capital Improvement Projects for 2023. Recommendation to the Select Board.
Mr. Chairman and the board, if I may. So I have two new documents that you see on here. They're similar. Well, the first one is similar to the other one. They had some last minute changes on here, but the first one that you see that doesn't have any colors on it or what have you, were all the prioritizations from the department heads for all their projects. It's separated out by vehicles and projects. Just to show what the priors of each department was. We can either go through there if there's any questions you want to discuss there, or if it, the other document is in relation to that. This is more of the priority rankings. So it's vastly different from the one that you got on Thursday when you picked up your packets. Just in all the projects are still on here, but they were separated out by year and then meeting with the town administrator. And also with the planning board chair, John, it was kind of discussed a little bit, how do we show the information a little bit better for the recommendations for the select board since the planning board is the acting body to give recommendations to the select board even though they're and then the planning board does accept it after it goes to the select board. So and prioritizations that I put on the second one are, I kind of just did the best of my ability and see if you guys want to discuss and change what you feel on there. Overall, from as, from all the department heads, the biggest discussion that felt like needed to be addressed was the dam project specifically Swains Lake Causeway. That seemed to be the number one project overall. It wouldn't be for next year, be pushed out to 2025 because there hasn't been any engineering or anything done on that. So that's why it's not in 2024, but once again, you guys, tell me what you, it's.
Well, remind me what we can do. We can't change the amount. We can't change the priority.
You can change the priority.
We can, okay.
So the first one just shows what the department heads thought was their priority and some of them, the vehicles, they're on a vehicle replacement too. So it's kind of like how those roll in. So those are kind of automatic.
Last time we changed the funds from one category to another too, right?
Yes, because I know last year we talked about like the Richardson Dam split cost. So yes, you could, if, if there's opportunities, yeah.
I'll let you go.
Here's your time.
So we might as well talk about the Richardson Pond Dam again. Because when I look at this one and we talk about splitting costs on that, the 175,000 that is conservation money is taxpayer money that was paid back in. It's, they didn't raise money. They didn't do anything to allocate funds. So they're just looking for the town to 100% fund the cost of that essentially. Like, and that, if you look at it, it's a giant mud puddle there is really what it is. They previously committed to do it themselves, right? They did when I was on the select board and then now you've got a new board and they're lobbying the heck out of it over there. You know, I think the question I have there is, you know, they're moving the dam to be funded 100% by the town. They still got a half a million dollars for acquiring property, so can't maintain the property you have now. Why do you look to acquire more property? This one is a little bit, and they got a staff member now to acquire property and to to maintain the property and keep track of the property and, I mean, this is a pretty ambitious quest, I think.
If my understanding was correct, when they entered into the agreement with the Southeast Land Trust, they agreed to fix the dam. And that is why it kind of held to that because that was out of the agreement. Constantly, as Andy said, the Conservation Commission said they would do it. They get current use money. So like all these lots out back, that land was all in current use, so they pay money for their current use every time one of them come in for a building permit. Conservation Commission is getting those funds.
75% of it.
But they don't want to spend it on this project. They want to keep it so they can use it to acquire other land. If you look at the largest part of the land that's been conserved and gone into conservation lately, it's been because of the conservation subdivisions, like this one out back here, there was over 100 acres that went into conservation because of how that was done. So that puts, I mean, my personal opinion, if you're not managing your stuff with the money you got, why are you taking on more? That's, that's my personal opinion.
So I, I mean, I, I would move it from city funded to their own funds. 100%, everything. I mean, that was the original deal with this thing. Guys get money and do stuff with it. Now they're looking, now they're looking to get the town to fund this thing. They're still getting the money. They want to do the stuff they want to do, stuff they took on previously. They want somebody else to pay for it.
Well, I think you have the dam and then the requirement that the town would like to see to allow fire department access. So you couldn't, you could just make a dam. But if you want to put a road on top, increases the cost of building structure.
Why would you put, put it in a dam? You would actually, because if you take out the dam and it's a pass.
Who's talking about taking out the dam?
That was one of the options for it.
Well, it's not now.
Because they don't want it to be, but it's like, you got four people, if you look at the meeting, they had four people who came in and bid on it and the 300 plus thousand they're allocating, they're going to spend every nickel of that and then some to actually go in and review it, engineer it, design, come up with a plan around retention of it. You could open that up and bring it down, the two feet that they're required to make a drive over causeway. And the only thing the fire department's going to be looking to get out there would be their UTV, which has tracks on it and will go across that without a problem. Yet we want to overcomplicate it and like put in some absurd, like at that point, just put a bridge in if you're really concerned about it, but take the dam out so you release this town of the liability. Because there's a requirement under the state to manage that dam and maintain it to a certain level. And I think, I think there's a scope, but to me also, shifting the burden away from, they're getting money and now asking taxpayers to step up and war while you're still acquiring property. I still want to acquire property and be, you know, but I don't want to maintain the property now. Right, and the town is already not compliant. We've had to extend that like four times.
The lane was donated to the town. Was there a caveat that they?
Yes, that's how it was pitched and presented in the warrant is that the Conservation Commission would manage and maintain it in full.
My question is.
Sorry.
They are required to maintain the dam.
Yes.
Oh, okay. They can't change the D. Whoever requires that correctly.
The Conservation Commission has a requirement to do it.
I thought you wanted to demolish the dam. I thought that was your position.
That's a, that's an option in it, so you don't have to worry. No, you don't have to maintain the dam. Like you have to maintain it if you keep it in existence, but I don't believe there is any contractual obligation that the dam has to actually stay in place.
If it was a trust agreement, you'd have to go to the Attorney General. You can go to court to have that. Anything that says that in age, in when land is donated.
Well, I think if we shift it back to them, they can make the decision what they want to do.
Yeah, they'll be more cost conscious.
Right. Maybe they'll drop a couple beavers over there and see if they build a new one.
And the other part is at that time they were getting 50% of the current use money and now they're getting 75%. So they actually got an increase of revenue from the town and then they want the town to pick up the cost even if, even though they're getting increased revenue.
I mean, 100%, they want, they wanted, everything was on the town, the town nickel. They want their cake and they want to eat it too. Yeah, I mean, don't, don't acquire the property if you can't maintain it. This is supposed to be a standalone fund, the fund conservation property. Acquisition and maintenance of, and now they're trying to change the game. And they're all supposed to have a maintenance plan. Every piece of conservation property that is acquired is supposed to have a maintenance plan and a management plan and is supposed to be managed as such. I, I was hot on that when I was on the select board and it's still an issue that has not been completely or even partially addressed. Higher guy.
So do we move it down to 15?
Well, I think. Just think it comes out of the capital plan. It becomes their, the Conservation Commission's burden to bear. So I, what we can do, I think you get a sense of where we're at.
I think you can prioritize.
You have a right to prioritize stuff, but as far as spending of the money, the selectman still makes that decision. The planning board doesn't.
I mean, pretty much everything they were asking for, the guy, I mean, more property. To me, they do the dam, you can put that up, you know, somewhere reasonable, but everything else has got to be secondary until that happens. You can't ask for anything else until you do that. That's where I'm at, you know? Don't ask for anything else until you've done what you're supposed to do. I don't know what I want to do, but I'm going to, I'm going to present, we're ambitions plans. That just seems to be disconnected logic to me.
Believe it or not, I agree 100% with Ron.
Well, the honesty Ryan then.
Do you want to vote on this?
Um, I think probably vote after each one. I think it probably just at the end.
Okay, we can do that.
Depending on how the rest of this plays out, I guess.
All right.
So I think probably the best one to probably look at is the color coded-ish one. Our priorities. Just to give you an overview, there is a legend on the back and stuff looking back and forth. So the pink that you will see a lot on here is that there are the funding source required. That means not quite sure which part of money you may come from. The lights, I'll just, I'll just go down the list. Like there's a darker green, which is conservation fund. Orange is highway heavy equipment. Like grayish blue is a dam capital reserve. Yellow is a secured grant.
The legends on the back.
Yeah, I was saying when you flip, it's kind of, if you want to go back and forth.
I have a question, kind of hopping into it. Like I saw highway flagged the Swains Lake Dam as his number one priority and his number two priority, he had the old settlers culvert. The Lakeside Oaks culvert work and that has grant money tied to it. Is there a reason, and I know this was something I had raised at one point earlier, why they don't just looking at punching it through onto what the heck's the name of the road right there? Comes out on like by Caleb Island.
Comes out Caleb Island Road. I can't think of the name. It's that little small, that little small road that has a little money turn on it.
Peabody, Peabody Way. Yeah, and there's a, I mean, it comes into a little cul-de-sac and if you look, it's like 20 feet with a grain.
It drops down. You have to go right in the guy's driveway. The fire department has a right to cross the grass and and reach Lakeside Oaks.
Right.
So you want to.
Why would you not? I mean, if you look at the connection, it would be, it would be far less than any amount of this here.
Get in the eminent domain and take the property to build a Class 5 road.
But if you look at the map, of course it won't open for me, but if you look at the town map on it, I'm pretty sure it abuts that property abuts, like you have the road that is, is essentially a giant right of way.
Yeah.
And you have this 30 foot strip that is, that technically, if you follow the road, connects to Peabody Way. It's just never been punched through, but rather than spending $680,000, I'm pretty sure you could connect the two for a heck of a lot less than that. And freedom backup means to actually give you two ways in and out of there. And it would actually be a huge improvement that you want to talk about, how do you increase values of property in town? That would be a significant boost for the properties over on Lakeside Oaks. Give us a question. What does the white box mean?
The white box, I kind of ran out of colors, so I'm going with school district. But all the way at the end, there are boxes that are not color coded because as we go through here, like the transfer station, acquiring lands, et cetera, don't really have like if there's opportunities that arise, that'd be great, but they're not really on the CIP. So like the transfer station, for example, they're going to have a feasibility study and going from there, they're going to decide what to do with all of their things, the balers and stuff, but I'm getting way into that, sorry.
Pearl Wayne would be the connection.
Pearl Lane, right.
Yeah. Peabody Way and Pearl Wayne.
So just to answer, Andy, as, as Chairman has said, like the Lakeside Oaks, once again, it is because it's an eminent domain issue, like how do you make somebody give up their land?
Right. I'll bet you if you asked them, they'd probably be pretty supportive.
Once again, just so this meeting doesn't go on forever, you have a right to set priorities. Spending is still regulated by the selectman.
Right.
So all this discussion is really not helping what we got to address tonight.
Just move the numbers, folks. I'm wondering why we need a $10 million addition to the elementary school, but I won't discuss that. The school population is, was 429 students in 2011 and now it's 422 students in 2022, so.
Well, again, in the documents, that's also a toxic population growth. If you run the numbers, it's, it's 6% population growth over 10 years.
You need 12 classrooms. It's already 12.
6% is, is 50 students, not, not the 100 and something they claim. And the trend is down if a housing starts and.
But they just did an assessment over 10 years, the school board did, 1429 kids.
It's five students per grade additional.
I know. I'm saying they did a study for the next 10 years, 1429 kids this year and 10 years, 1400. There's no growth.
Hasn't been for the last 15 years.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you go all the way back, no growth. In fact, there's fewer students. It just gave a total for 915 and maybe this is K through 8.
And if the housing starts in here, it's down.
Yeah, most of these people moving in are retirees, I'm suspecting, to like the 13 deeds that have just passed them.
I mean, that's, it's 2000.
Kansas.
2025.
What's that?
2025, so they're pushing that pretty far forward. So that's, I gotta agree, that's a question. Somebody else can ask that question.
Right. Well, the school board representative was at this last select board meeting and she didn't go into this detail. Figure of 915 kids, current census that just took for K through 8. Okay.
So where are we?
So, yeah, so circle back at, for, if we want to look at 2024, how do you feel the priorities are? Ranked? Moving the Richardson Dam to the ends are the last priority.
Obviously, within the land use stuff, you get the top.
I know. Thank you. However, so that's where it was, it's kind of a hard exercise because it's also based on budget, right? So for me anyways, or for the land use department, it comes out of our operating budget. So every year I try to allocate a certain amount of money and for the last couple of years and then going through the new budget season. We haven't met with the budget folks yet, but I anticipate there won't be any issues. So I think, I don't know if prioritizing, this is where I get sticky, is like prioritizing because we don't have money or we do have money. Like this is probably going to happen anyways because I have it within my budget, but I had to put it on as a capital improvement project.
Well, I mean, if we're prioritizing, Richardson Dam, 50/50 split, right to the bottom.
Yep, bottom to 350.
It's now number 15.
And that's the only, that's the only 2024 I have a problem with.
Okay.
I guess this is the financial person in me.
That's totally fine. Any help with it because I'm not the financial person.
Is there anything where secured grants and where funding has already been done? I don't see any of that allocated in the library money and they had a giant fundraising campaign for that.
Well, that's private money, $500,000.
Right, but wouldn't that be?
On here, yeah, because I wasn't sure how to identify it. Because I'm not privy to like all the.
Well, if you're going to do that, we should, we should put a column on the capital reserve funds too.
We can color code it, something else or.
But I mean, they're noted as capital reserve items, so.
I know, but if we, we can actually look in this and see the project's worth 110,000 and you go in and you see we just raised fire truck capital reserve by 100,000, for example, and culverts by 300,000, which was doubling what we did previously. It gives us some idea how much the funds are and each year we can track how much is added and how much. It gives us some idea how much the funds are, and each year, we can track how much is added and how much has been spent. Just gives us some idea how to prioritize these things. Just a thought. I wasn't sure how Connor was suggesting that.
I don't know.
No, when we talked to Connor, was he kind of suggesting that?
They're actually all broken out that way anyway.
What's that?
They're all broken out that way anyway. If you look at the capital reserve funding, they have the fee.
I know, I've got them all here, yeah, I've got them all.
Yeah.
I'm talking about each category, or each department know how much funding they have, and whether the project is viable, or they, they don't have the funds to carry it out, that's all.
Sounds like that's not our purpose.
Okay. We're just moving numbers, I mean, moving spots.
I do.
Okay. Uh, construct a new library building, we should change, think of, is it going to buy a building, then I'll look and construct a new building, I heard.
They liked that one they saw, but if it doesn't go through, they're going to be back to building, depending on how.
I'll tell you what, I'd be more inclined to advocate them spending a million, million and a half than I would spending three and a half to.
That's actually a pretty nice building.
Three and a half, I should take out, is not the new building cost.
The bonding would be around five. For the new.
The new building is five.
No, the billion for a million, and they could probably put a million in.
They have to ratchet for another two and a half million or.
Get out of here.
Can fix it? Oh, God.
That's why I was told. That's why the figure changed, because then the other one, it was five point four million or something for a completely new building.
We're in the wrong line of work, Bob.
We just did a town hall for one point nine.
Or to buy the land, or the building and retrofit it, it's supposed to be three point five is the estimate.
Two and a half for a billion on slab, that's on, a lot of money.
There's a lot of building there, though.
Yeah, but it's on slab, it's, I don't think weight's a big problem.
It's not a weight issue, it's, you got to look at where, like, stubble up some electrical and bathrooms.
It's got a foundation, it just doesn't have a basement, that's what they mean on slab. And what happens is if you had a basement underneath, when it comes to library loading, you would have a major issue because you wouldn't be able to make the straw, the floor strong enough to support all of that. So even if you built a new library, the stuff you have for all your books and all that stuff would be on the slab in the new building, even though it has frost protection as a foundation.
Uh, what, it's a twenty-three-year-old building, I mean, does major, any major problems with it so far?
Roof and so forth. I wasn't invited as part of the sidewalk, I don't know.
Okay, that's not our proof. Wouldn't bring your zoning and code enforcement officer in to actually give a building assessment of what that is? Maybe we actually do an environmental assessment of the building and, like, check it for, like, tightness and seal and, like, R-value and things like that?
They could bring a professional company in to lay all that stuff all out.
Apparently, that's two point five million of the three, that's five million, to pull people to do that.
Sorry, my cynicism is a little, little thick today.
Okay, any other numbers we want to switch around on this, uh?
No, I got that.
This goes twenty-four, Rolset?
Yep.
Okay. Want to continue this?
Yes, fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-five, um, as mentioned before, um, the Swains Lake Causeway, um, is number one priority overall for the highway department.
Well, that's, uh, six million dollars.
Yeah.
Can't we just dead-end the road?
The Swains Lake Causeway? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, down by Big Rock, where it ends. And let the leg, let the leg be free again.
Yeah, you want to, you want to know the impact on taxes to do that? Your assessment, my assessment will go way down. That, that lake is a money pit for the town, don't kid yourself.
It's a pit.
I mean, generous, my road alone, twenty-five thousand dollars a year at least, extra per year because of the lakefront problem, my little road. It's, that, that lake is money generated for the town like crazy.
Oh, yeah. Oh, to me, a money pit is something you throw money in, then you don't get back.
You don't get that, yeah. My mic on. You throw money into and don't get back.
I think you'd be surprised how much land has gone out.
I wouldn't be surprised, I, I live on a lake, I give my assessment.
No, with the new assessments.
That's why we invite people up to live on the lake.
Of course, let the, let these out-of-towners pay for it.
On my road, nobody, no kids in school either, zero.
That's why we invite the U retirees up, pay us all kinds of taxes when we retire, which is right.
My road, there's, there's two, and two kids in the school system, that's it. My son is one of them.
Does that look like the priority list that we?
All right, let's continue.
I just got one question, I'm not understanding.
Yep.
Um, instead staffing for the Conservation Commission?
What do you people do?
Well, instead staffing for the Conservation Commission, um, is it going to be land use that they actually work for, and it goes under your land use budget?
It would, um, that's how it should shake out because conservation falls under land use department.
So if there's going to be a budget line, it would actually be a budget line for land use, so shouldn't that be listed as land use and not a conservation thing? If it's coming out of a land use budget?
Excellent point.
Which one is this?
The one for the Conservation Commission, where they want to hire staff.
The Conservation Commission.
Staff is going to be working for the land use department, not the Conservation.
Conservation Commission wants them, so they, um, someone to staff or do monitoring and the easements, what the volunteers have traditionally been doing. Um, so that's why they're lobbying for it, not necessarily us, because it's based on the group.
If it's conservation fund money, and they just have someone and they're using that conservation fund money to pay for it, then it would be a conservation thing.
Yeah, it's coming from the conservation fund, putting to this.
So, no, it's not, so it's tech, so was it?
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Muddled there.
So the conservation, I guess, would have to have a budget line if they're going to do that.
Recession.
Or there's this, they just hire them as a subcontractor like they would? Because they're not a budget line? Probably going to be like a sub.
Plus, they want to do an management plan, too.
But I think, I think our department, the land use department, would have to oversee them because conservation commission falls under that.
I'm assuming they would be a contractor, not an actual staff employee. Because otherwise, you've got to deal with the whole benefits end of it and all of that.
Yeah, that'd be way more than twenty-five grand.
Way more.
Put that to thirteen.
Yeah, I guess, you've got, you've got a staff guy for twenty-five grand, couldn't you do your conservation, uh, management plan as well?
Well, I think what it is, is their easements, you're required to walk your easements every year.
No, no, what I'm saying, John, if you look at ten, they got a, they got a conservation, uh, conservation management plan, the thirty grand. Now, you got a guy for twenty-five grand. I'm saying, can't the twenty-five grand guy do the thirty K worth of work? What's, what's he doing?
Wow, they, they got a guy that's going to walk the boundaries to make sure that no one's doing something on the conservation land they're not supposed to. And then you hire a consultant to do the other work, that's two totally different, you're not going to hire an engineer consultant to go walk your property lines for twenty-five grand, because there, there's a lot of hours involved in that.
I'm not saying the engineer do the walking, I'm saying the guy do the plan.
Well, they're hiring someone that likes to hike in the woods, and he's going around, and he's probably doing it for a pretty low rate, and he's probably not qualified to make a plan because he's just a guy going out to see that, make sure that nothing's going on. People that abut that aren't doing something on the conservation land, that's two.
So you put, you pay a guy thirty grand to put together a plan, the guy who's actually doing the plan is twenty-five K.
Yes.
Got it, got it.
All right, do we want to re, prioritize, make any changes to the priorities on fiscal year twenty-five?
Conservation of the bottom.
Yep.
That's a, Donna mentioned for staffing, and then the management plan, is there one over the other that?
Do you want to move ten and eleven to spots, twelve and thirteen?
Yeah, give, uh, give, give Mark the dump truck before we go. We've got a guy walking around the woods.
Hey. I, I'm just curious, like, as I look at this, like, where, you know, you're talking between the school building, the police, the highway, the Swains Lake Dam, the library, you've got over eleven million dollars in spend in there between twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
In the past, this has been called a wish list, it's not always something, you can't fund and do everything on this. And it'd be, uh, duh, if you want your taxes to not skyrocket, you don't do all of this.
I'm already concerned that they're going to go up as it is, and they shouldn't be when you look at the increase in values, but.
Well, the rate will go down, but your taxes all go up every year.
No, 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 I'm saying, I don't even know if the rate's going to go down the way they're, depends on how they spend their money.
Well, the people vote on how to spend the money.
Yeah, it's up to the, whatever.
So, even though it's.
Doesn't change.
A huge expense, too, so at the select board meeting on the second, they're going to take their recommendations, and that's where they're going to, like, find, I don't know, fine-toothed comb, but kind of do more of an exercise.
Right.
To stay on.
They'll probably change our priorities anyway, so.
Yeah. They just wanted something to start from.
Wow, a cardiac monitor is forty grand, wow. Expensive.
What's that?
Cardiac monitor.
Forty grand.
Let's not bump that down to the bottom.
Up at the top, I'm getting old.
A lot of times, they get grant money and stuff on that stuff, too, so it's not.
Or the, uh.
That comes out of the fire equipment, equipment in the Fireman's Association.
Rick's been pretty good about getting stuff like that without spending a lot of money.
Right, he's paid for half of it.
My age, I'm going to say taken up, just surprised how expensive it is.
Is, is Rick always says he is a frugal Yankee, and I appreciate every bit of what he works on there to.
Okay, we're on, uh, twenty-six, any changes to twenty-twenty-six? Finished twenty-five, right?
Okay, so you have the last one again, huh?
Yep.
Jeez.
There, she said she has the money in her budget to cover it, so whether they prioritize it or not.
It's still happening.
They're recommending moving number ten to number one. No?
Leave it there, she's got it, she's just got in the bag anyway.
Okay. They're rolling in dough.
Land use department, they got all kinds of money, they can spend, they can spend ten grand a year on consultants.
Do you want twenty-seven now, too?
We're in twenty-six.
Yeah, we, we're wrapping it up.
I don't see anything on twenty-six.
So, water features to be determined. At first, um, Jesse said she wanted to do a splash playground, but then she's not sure if she wants to do that or some kind of, it could also be, like, if they get beach access, or there could be other things, she didn't want to tie herself to one item.
She has the beach thing in there in addition, though, she has.
Right.
There was talk of a brass-like statue of Donna Masucci, and the water just shone all over. Right, right.
Two eagles.
Two eagles.
Being picked up and flown away, and then.
Okay, so, I'm hearing no issues for twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Seven.
No, I think you're so far out at that point, it's really just trucks and equipment.
And water features.
Twenty-eight.
No prob, no issues twenty-eight.
Hey, twenty-nine, couple of trucks, uh, land use master plan chapter, again. And then housing, thirty.
I have thirty-one.
Nobody wants anything.
Nobody wants anything in that year.
The taxes will go down.
Money we would save.
Okay.
I have no problem with thirty-two or thirty-three.
All right. Our work is done.
I don't like John Deere.
No, you've got to run the dam, Andrew, you've got to run the dam.
All right.
So, um.
So we have to make a recommendation to the, to the board.
If, um, as corrected, I guess, on here to move to the.
As recommended.
Okay.
The recommendation's a little strong.
Okay, recommend, yes.
And you want to vote?
Yeah, sure, let's do that, let's make a vote.
I recommend to be wise with our money. What a word. Is there a second, second?
Whatever you call, I, I didn't say anything, so I, I want a second.
I thought Ron said it first, and then you said something, so I don't know who wants.
And I'll second Ron's comment about them being wise with our money.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chia?
Tessie, right?
Alan, I.
Let's go, I.
He can call for it, but I'm going to move it along.
Appreciate it.
All right, and then item B, six B, discussion of potential zoning amendments.
Before we get started, I just want to clarify, at the next work session in October, I'll have all of the edits. This is just some, I hate to say leftovers, but some other things that we wanted to bring up for discussion again that didn't get to, or anything else that was maybe, not the last minute, but other things to consider tonight. So with that, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you if you want, or I can.
Go ahead.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, so, um, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about, um, senior housing, elderly, congregant care, et cetera. And just to circle back to the senior housing, I didn't have it in our notes that we were changing anything. However, I know, talking with the code enforcement officer, um, he said that we should bring it back because there was a lot going on that evening to see if he wanted to revisit it. Or not necessarily revisit it, but like, to see if it's still these changes, because I didn't have it in this.
And in the commercial ones, we're talking about making him, you could have a lot of building that, but the residential neighborhoods wanted to keep it at eight so that if someone redid a house, that it would still be compatible with the residential stuff. That's how, that's how I remembered the conversation going, because it was a long conversation, we went whole one direction, then we came back around and started back again. So we just wanted to clarify, that's the direction that the board was, wanted to go.
I thought that was the conversation.
Yeah. Well, the item you just brought up, if it's a house they want to convert, it would be bedrooms, beds, not dwelling units, right?
Well, yeah, but see, there's a maximum of eight now, that's what that note is.
Eight dwelling units, it says.
That note that was on there?
Item six, I think.
Yeah, I thought it said beds or something like that, note says, but that's.
So eight dwelling units.
Okay, maybe it was dwelling units when it was under the.
Yeah, it'd be like those condo projects, you know, that, up to eight.
Well, I think the genesis for this was the, uh, senior housing center of town, yeah.
Yeah, there was units, it wasn't, but anyways, it was about if, if someone did the eight, the maximum we got is the eight, that you wanted to be, allow them to go bigger, like in the town center and that kind of, but you, you didn't want these huge buildings in your residential neighborhood, so you wanted to keep the eight, is how I remember the conversation going when it went full circle.
Correct. I was thinking in the multifamily housing, um, in the general residential, if you look at the zoning, it really talks about having non-intensive development. So I'm wondering if we should just, um, remove the CP six and make that not allowable.
Which district?
General residential, multifamily housing. In other words, somebody could have two-acre lot next to houses with two-acre lots, find some land behind it, find a couple of spots that have contiguous uplands, use that score and be able to put eight units on a two-acre lot.
Wow, they would have the eight units all in one building, which would be on that, but they would, you couldn't subdivide that land off. It would, if they got eight units, they would still, they would still have to have a dozen acres, wow.
They would have to merge it first.
Right, right.
And which means then it has to come into compliance with the current zoning regulation of the, of that time.
And to get eight units, you're looking at probably twenty acres by the time you do your eighty thousand square feet, uh, you have sixty thousand for your hydroic acid soils and exposed ledge, and the thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands for each unit. So by the time you did the math on that, you got at least twenty acres to get those acres.
Seven with thirteen acres.
When you.
Currently.
Say that again?
Is that whole lot only thirteen acres?
Yeah.
Oh, that's regional commercial, it's a different zone.
No, they, they're in general residential.
Yeah, they are.
Right on the edge of that, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's like Winkley, Pondus, and Divining.
So those could, those could be done anywhere, as Andy says, you can just break by, you got a small lot, you just, there's some land of contiguous value.
They have to merge it, so it wouldn't be a small lot, it'd be a big lot.
No, you, you take that and you merge it with your two or three-acre lot, yes, that's what I'm saying.
The big thing that I would look at on there is you want to make sure you're talking about contiguous uplands, and because if you, you, you look at how some cases, things have come in, is there's a disconnect between what is contiguous upland and what becomes.
Well, the regulation says for your first unit, you need thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands. For each additional unit, you need an additional thirty-five thousand, but it doesn't say anything about being contiguous. So that's the section you want to change, that's why, I think in chapter four, it has that bit about contiguous uplands is part of that.
So if you want to look.
That would solve ninety percent.
Let's do that right now before we forget about it.
If you look at page two on the zoning amendments that we're working on, it's item number five. It says to amend four point two point one standards for the general residential neighborhood districts. Um, and this shows, um, a language change for hydroic acid soils to say poorly, very poorly drained, and then also. And then also to put the contiguous upland, um, soils to be consistent. And then there was the question to consider, which, um, the chairman just brought up, um, about the multifamily housing. Where to put the contiguous on there, I'm not sure.
You put it at the very end, right there, that looks good to me.
Okay, just.
Does that look at you in?
To play devil's advocate.
Okay.
Thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands for the first unit, then you need thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands for each one. Could it be thirty-five thousand here, thirty-five thousand over there, thirty-five thousand over there, because those would all be contiguous uplands, but you wouldn't have, you know, like a hundred thousand of contiguous uplands by saying I need thirty-five contiguous uplands for each one and they're all in that same area, that's, so right now, it, it wouldn't change it a lot because they have to have thirty-five thousand of uplands, so if you've got six different contiguous uplands, you still got thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands six different times.
The, but the way I view contiguous up, contiguous is connected, the word contiguous.
Yeah.
But the way, but the way this is worded.
He's saying it's contiguous per lot.
No, no, per a unit.
Per unit.
No, 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 it's contiguous, period.
But that's not what it says, even the new stuff doesn't say that.
But that's what I'm saying is that it should be worded as it's contiguous, period.
If you want six units, you need, let's say, two hundred thousand of contiguous uplands.
Yes.
Well, see, that's what needs to be, that needs to be clarified in this, if that's what you're doing.
No, I, I agree, I'm just trying to make sure.
Let's get some wording on this before.
I don't know how to word it, you've got, that's not my specialty yet.
And this is going to be under four point.
You'd have to say contiguous, um, that uplands have to be contiguous for all the dwelling unit requirements or something like that, I mean, in order to, I'm not sure how to put it in words either.
Could it be contiguous upland soils for all units?
Say, uh, increased by thirty-five thousand square feet of upland soils, all, all, all soils need to be contiguous for the, for the, you have another sentence and say it's all going to be contiguous? All, all these requirements need to be one continuous, contiguous lot?
I'm not sure there's a lot in Barrington where you can get three hundred thousand of contiguous uplands.
Well, these are for the neighborhood, uh, general and neighborhood residential, so I think that's kind of the point we don't want them.
Yeah, but I think if you look at your regional commercial, it kicks it back to, um, the designs for the neighborhood and the general residential.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not just for them, it kicks it back, so, now, if they did, in the regional commercial, if they did, um, mixed use, you could have as many as you want and there's no upland requirements at all.
Right.
But if they don't have the business there, now you're saying I gotta have three hundred thousand of contiguous uplands, you ain't gonna get that. I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to point out the issues that what you're, what you're saying in reality.
Well, I think everybody's kind of disturbed when these people just, you know, cross a river or across the woods. Say, oh, here's a bunch of contiguous here, here's some here, we're gonna combine those together and we can build X number of houses or units based on that.
I mean, I agree with it.
I think that's what Andy's trying to say.
No, and I understand why you're trying to go, I'm just.
The, I guess the way you could accomplish that is make a four point two point one parents four that, that says contiguous uplands is, is defined as the connection of any item under four point two point one parents one, parents two, parents three, parents four. Defines contiguous upland is the connection of any one of those, is any one or all of those items.
Contiguous item. All, all required uplands need to be contiguous for the lot.
Right.
Something like that.
Yes.
Wait, say that again?
All, all uplands got to be contiguous for the lot.
For the density.
Right, density.
For the density, yeah.
Lot density, yeah, lot density.
Because you look at the calculations they use.
Because that will, that will prevent somebody from having like a perched upland way out somewhere where they'd never be able to do anything with it anyway. And using it in their calculation.
By the regular regulations are written, no, they can't.
They can.
Now, let me ask this question, I, I, I think the answer is yes, but I just want to. Everybody that comes in and comments on these developments says that because they're abutters. Do the non-abutters feel the same way?
Not in my neighborhood, I don't care.
I mean, does.
That's what I'm saying, the non-abutters got this attitude, it's not my neighborhood, I don't care.
Right, it's.
Until it's in your neighborhood.
It's a NIMBY issue, it'd be, it's NIMBY, it's the not in my backyard, until it's in my backyard.
French is properized somewhat, do you, what do you think the town in general, off the abutters, the town in general comes down?
I think if you put it in front of the town in general, they will say, wait a minute, that could happen next to me, no, I don't want that next to me.
I think that, I agree with that too, but I just.
Yeah, that belongs into the, you know, town center or village district.
Right, what it actually does is it drives your density back to those areas and it stops people from buying something up and figuring out how.
Little road, right. Squeezing things in.
How can I go buck wild with a plan here?
Yeah, so if you leave four point two point two alone, that's, like I said, that brings you back into your village district. So really, you're trying to fix it in your general residential, your neighborhood residential, but it's also unless you go to the regional commercial one that refers it back, you could have the regional commercial instead of referring it back to the general residential, you could refer it back to your village center if you want to have more on your.
But regional commercials, you can't do with it five hundred feet of the twenty-five and stuff like that, so that kind of kills a lot of stuff already.
No, but what it says is it brings you, it refers you back to four point two point one to figure your density.
For the density.
The regional commercial does, now, if you're gonna refer it back, you might want to refer your regional commercial back to four point two, which is the density requirement that's in your village district. It's just, when you change one thing, it affects other things, that's where, you know, that's kind of the reason why I'm here tonight, because if you change something, I just wanted to point out the other things that get affected. But you could change that section in your gen, in the regional commercial, which is what, um, four point, yeah, four point two point three, the regional commercial thing, refer it back to four point two, which would be the density in your village district. If you still want to allow the multifamily along your regional commercial line, you're just trying to keep it out of your neighborhood and general residential.
Regional commercial's got to be mixed use, right?
No, it doesn't have to be, you can do multifamily there too, so if you go to, yeah, so if you do the.
That's what they were talking about.
Okay, alright, alright, I thought it was just mixed. Okay, I see.
That's on that?
Parcels left in.
No, what you'll, what you'll start seeing happen now is now it becomes the redevelopment of places that may have been single family properties or business property and it becomes, how do I, somebody starts looking at that and says, okay, how do I make this comply with the new rules, so they're looking at like a mixed use structure on the bottom with the residential components above to start making that property have value.
Well, then it would be mixed use, it wouldn't be, um.
Right, but in the regional commercial, that's how they would get their value out of that.
Right, but the regional, if you look at four point two point three parentheses two.
Yep.
That kicks you back to where you can do the mixed use based on the density that's in the regional commercial, I mean, the general residential and, um, neighborhood residential. Now, if you don't want to have that mixed use, I mean, the, if you want it to be mixed use and you want to get away from multifamily in that commercial thing, maybe you should change four point two point three parentheses two and take out that residential component for multifamily completely. I mean, if that's what you're trying to achieve, I'm, I'm just, you know.
I don't know, Andy, but to me, the mixed use has been a, has been a disaster.
It just hasn't developed.
We get these residentials with these little garages below that, you know, have no use, they're just getting the density with the mixed use, meeting difference requirement.
Wait.
The one up on, on, uh, nine, in the back, they get the little garage underneath, commercial space, you know, we have the, we have the garage for residents off to the side. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a way to get density.
Nine in the back.
The one that Paul Tibido got approved is what he's talking about.
That, that didn't have garages under, it had, uh.
A business.
It took, yeah, I mean, it was.
The same thing here, businesses and they got, they got an office in the front and they got a garage in the back, half of that downstairs, it was more than half of it is a garage. And, but it's still commercial on the bottom, it still can only be used for that, so if you go to your definition on mixed use, so this must be, I brought this up before, I, I hate to make this meeting go longer than it needs to, but.
Don't, don't. Those commercial spaces underneath, they're not driving any commercial space like we, like they're intended to do. They're not, you know, driving people downtown, they're not doing any.
Well, they're not in downtown.
They, even if it's downtown, they don't put any down, but the, the commercial spaces don't become anything that makes, you know, the downtown concept work, you know?
Because downtowns don't work.
Yeah.
They, they can if you build them with a, with a purpose of that, the problem is if you look at our downtown, it's bigger than Rochester's downtown by scale, like if you actually look at it in, in the square, ours is like four square miles. If you look at the defining character of downtown Rochester, it's actually only like two square miles, ours is double the size of it.
Square miles?
Sorry, I'm done.
So anyways, if you go to your mixed use structures, it talks about having, um, institutional civic, office, commercial and retail use businesses, so the commercial, when you read all the things that you got listed as a commercial use, you might want to change what those bottom units can be that's in that commercial use. Then you would get more of that downtown thing like Andy was talking about, where you would get, um, go back to that definition.
Of mixed.
You would have your, um, institutional civic office and then retail use buildings, take the commercial thing out. The commercial thing, when you look at your table of uses, all the things that you were talking about, you don't like are part of those commercial listed items.
Yeah.
So a definition change there would fix a lot of the things that you were talking about and you would still have your mixed use building, which would give you that residential use.
I think that'd be improved, I mean, I, I still don't think the, the concept of walkable downtown was, you know, commercial, uh, would.
That's that whole thing we tried to do with the PUD and the whole bit with the town center, um, it's, I don't, I think it's overly complicated to where it doesn't get built out that way because people come in the town center and say, I can do a mixed use thing, I'm not gonna do the PUD.
Right.
I mean, you, you even look at Dover now, Dover's downtown is all going away from businesses and shops to barber shops, accountants, lawyers, so the whole downtown, it's, restaurants, that's the only thing you've got downtown Dover.
Well, that's nothing else can afford to be there, just when you look at the rents, they're so astronomical.
There's no way we're gonna get that here.
But your office and retail stuff could be allowed use, but the commercial use, that's when you get into like storages and all the other stuff, that's the commercial use.
Yeah, I think that'd be a big improvement. I mean, I, I, it's a questionable concept, but I think that would be a big improvement, I agree with that.
I think if you looked at, like, if you look at our downtown center, when downtown center is flagged to like, this comes all the way up into, like, well, this is technically, I guess, village district, um, I think.
You might be regional commercially, the line, the line's very close to where the regional commercial and the village is, I think this is regional commercial.
Like, like if you look at it, the, the downtown center is, it sprawls on both sides of nine and one twenty-five, which is not walkable anyway, because nobody is walking across one twenty-five as a, is, you know, with their baby carriage, you'll get mowed down on that thing, um, so it really like, and I understand like why, when they were laying it out, the thought process behind it with lots, and that was something I talked with Marcia and John about way back when. Um, but it really should be on one side or the other and it should probably be significantly smaller in scale and scope from a downtown center end, because then it would actually function like a downtown center where maybe you're only crossing that portion of nine, not trying to cross both sides, and then your village district, which encompasses both sides.
Village center that was a lot bigger, then we got it changed to where it has town center and then a village district, which was one district cut in part and, and the whole conversation, because we hired, um, some.
But even the village district is huge.
Was, you had to have it where traffic and people were around, but you can't create a downtown off in the woods where no one sees it going through Barrington.
I mean, I think that, given the days of, you know, bricks and mortar stores and, you know, it's, it's hard. I think if we're talking about a bedroom community, a rural community, having a downtown like Dover, I just don't think it's a realistic.
No, what you're looking at are your coffee shops, like your, well, donut shops, your things.
That one, right, right, the one that I'm visiting for three months, that downtown, I'm sure it flowers downtown, even though it failed.
Can I circle back to something real fast, um, for the?
Bring us back.
Yes, please. Four point two point three, when, when John was talking about, do I hear that you guys want to change it to refer to the four point two?
Remove the commercial out.
No, no, that's, no.
I got that.
Back a step before that.
The one before that, because you were talking about it, but I wasn't sure if that was a consensus that.
So your regional commercial refers you back to the general residential and neighborhood residential, do you want it to refer it back to that or to the village district, which gives you a different density, especially where you're changing the density in your general residential, neighborhood residential?
To make it all the. I just want to make sure that.
That, that's what the discussion was.
That you guys are.
She can bring it forward that way and you can still debate it and do the whole thing when you.
We could, what part goes to the density of the village?
Excuse me? That's the one where it used to be ten thousand for each additional unit, you guys changed it to forty thousand a couple of years ago? So it would refer your regional commercial to that density, which is different than your general residential, neighborhood residential, especially if you're trying to keep your multifamily in that area where you're trying not to have the multifamily be in your regular residential zone, I mean, that's what I, I, that's what I was hearing you guys say.
I just want to make sure I have that correct, that you guys are okay with that. Um, can we circle back to the beginning for the story, back at amending the table of uses just to talk quickly about the storage facilities, to amend this use of storage facilities to perhaps add a new note to read limited to a single story, um, that was, um, John's recommendations, if there's questions.
I thought, I thought there were scissors brought that, that John or you or Sis? Oh, yeah, John, I'm sorry.
This is John, sorry, John Resco, the chairman, sorry.
He didn't like, he didn't like what you saw on Route nine.
I don't like what I saw on Route nine either.
The bluebirds are going everywhere.
We want twenty-five, I saw one twenty-five.
No.
It's on Route nine.
Very new one on Route nine going up.
I see that.
Yeah, it's just past Crosby Road on the right.
So this will be con, conformed to the ones we already have, single story. At, at the elite town line, there's a bunch of them and you've got one on Winkley Pond Road.
How big are the bluebirds, because we have a limit of thirty-five feet, right, would they comply with thirty-five feet?
Yeah, you get three stories and. No, I mean, you tend, that's ten, that's with a ten foot floor and, and an eight plus foot, so if you did ten foot and it's just, you're just running your, your girders and everything and.
Put that big jetty thing on.
Scissor trusses, you're, you're not even gonna, you're, you're not gonna put a ceiling in, you're just gonna.
So, single story, you, you want to go single story?
See the problem, I wanted to not allow them, but the bridge too far.
I want to put a wall, so let's vote.
Single, I'm for single.
Single story or?
I'm fi, I'm, I'm fine with the single story, I don't have an issue with that.
You don't want to be building three stories.
No, no, but I, I picture like Lindsey's pit, and if they want to throw a bluebird down in there, I wouldn't give two hoots.
Yeah. I'm sure it won't be hidden away in Lindsey's pit, it'll be.
Front and center.
Nine, right on front and center, this is their advertising.
Yeah.
They use the building for a big advertising. I kind of thought Lindsey's pit would be perfect for, uh, since we also, uh, took it out of the residential.
No, we didn't take it out, what we did is we added the commer, we, well, and that didn't even get passed because that was a whole.
But that went past.
That passed the second time around, yeah, it passed.
Okay.
Lindsey's is not commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that would be great for multifamily housing.
So I'm hearing that's.
I'm, I'm going with single story.
Okay.
I'm going with single story.
So.
Too close to the road with the noise.
The next section kind of bleeds into something else, but to amend section six point three point two, um, I just had some language changes, um, because it references two plans, kind of to break it out to design and a yield plan. Now, I know Ron, which in the spotlight.
Yeah, I want.
Wanted to discuss, um, you know what you want.
Yeah.
Barbara was supposed to print it out.
For the yield plan, I wanted to add language, it says, yield plans must be technically and financially reasonably feasible. Planning board may request a cost benefit review of the plan or assumptions of the plan demonstrate all lot, all lots are financially viable under current market conditions. Actually, yeah, six point, six point three point two point three, yeah, right there. So, I think we tend to gloss over the yield plan too often. And I think they do stuff that's, you know, cuts and fills and stuff.
So let me ask a question, because we're now talking about correcting the contiguous uplands component on that, by, by doing this to where now stuff has to be like contiguous uplands per lot.
It already is, that has enough change, the contiguous uplands on the multifamily, you could do it all. It already is. That has enough change. The contiguous uplands on the multifamily, you could do it on one big lot. If you're doing individual lots in a subdivision, it is each lot has thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands. Even the yield plan that you saw that the ones you guys don't like, those had thirty-five thousand of contiguous in each lot. I guess what the concept was, got this, showing this real long road going back, it's only gonna give you two house lots, but it still had thirty-five thousand of uplands in each of those lots.
Right, but it wasn't contiguous.
Yes, they are.
You had to cross a wetland to get to it.
I know, but the uplands would have to be thirty-five thousand contiguous. When they crossed the.
Once you got to it.
There was thirty-five thousand contiguous on the other side of that.
But the change we were talking about addresses that to be fully contiguous uplands.
No, each lot has thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands.
All, all the ones in the back.
Oh, oh, because you're subdividing each, right, right, but remember what we just talked about.
But that was your multifamily thing, which was different. That's a lot of multiple units on the same lot.
Right, 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 right. Because of the whole, because you're creating a subdivision with lots.
To me, it's conceptual, if they came in with that, with that plan, would we approve it? The conceptual, I would say, no, we wouldn't have approved it.
Yes, you would, because it meets all your requirements. So what happens if you do what I'm, you don't, you can't say we, you meet all our requirements, but I don't like it, so I'm.
No, 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 John, I think it doesn't, I think it doesn't meet the requirements.
No, it does meet the requirement.
I don't think it does. I think I did, I spent three hours going over the regs. I don't think that, I don't think we, I think we could have not approved those back three lots. But it would have been, a couple of reasons. Well, number one, it says, you know, you gotta, it says all over the, you gotta protect state.
Wait, just.
Let me finish.
We shouldn't know.
Yeah. But I think, I think we could have said no to that. Put it this way, I think if that was presented as a real plan, we really spent time going over it? First of all, I don't think with it presented, the the cost would.
I think we should start discussing it because it's an open case.
Yeah, let's.
Let's take a theoretical.
Theoretical case, does the yield plan have to work?
Does the yield plan have to work in the real world, not just on paper? Not on paper. Would they really do?
Would send that yield plan to our engineers and give us a cost estimate with a, a bridgewood cotton.
No, I would say have them do it. Then have our, our agents review it.
Okay, well, either or, yeah, right.
So my language says, have the applicant, the planning board may request a cost benefit review of the plan or sections of the plan demonstrate all lots of financially viable under current market.
We can run it by the lawyer, see if she'll.
You're asking them to engineer a whole application that you have no intention on improving. I'm not so sure that is something that.
Remember, John, the yield plan says, you, I can do this. I can do this, but I'm doing the conservation instead. Prove to me you can do that. You're basing your your density based on that plan. But that plan just a, you know, is a, can't really be done, wouldn't be done.
Well, when they base the density on it, it, does it have eighty thousand, um, square feet of soils? Does it have sixty thousand square feet, three of, um, hydrogyne exposed ledge? Does it have thirty-five thousand of contiguous uplands? If it meets those, it meets your regulations. That's the point I was trying to make before. So it meets the regulations, so those lots meet your regulation. You say, no, we're not gonna approve it, but it meets all the regulations. You have what ground to stand on. That's the point I'm trying to make.
So, hey, hold on, hang on, you guys. Does it, does, how do you make sure, like, you're talking about those specific components, but how do you lump in the, does it meet the percent grade that you have for what that needs to be? Does it meet?
And, um, that's the application. You guys asked him to engineer that, and he did, and he showed that it met those grades. So he he proved out that it met it without sending it to some engineer. So how do you, the financial feasible thing, I'm not sure how you can get it. I don't even know how you can do that. It's, I'm not even sure the math works on it to make you do that. That's, that's, I don't, I don't understand the pro- I don't see how you can make it and any regulations work.
I I think if you, if you're saying that I am allowed to do this, and you, and to me, that means you would present that to the planning board and we would approve it. And, but instead of doing this, I'm doing the conservation.
I have a really easy solution to all of this. Well, change your lot density.
Well, I know you you like that, but to me, I think the yield plans, some of them are just, you know, fantasy. They're just fantasy. And we really haven't got the strength and the regulations to say, that's, that's not something would really be done. Come on, don't tell, don't tell me that we would approve that so you can do that same density somewhere, you know, the same density. Because if it, if we really look at that plan, we wouldn't approve it, then.
But what would your grounds be for not approving it? That's what I keep, that's, you keep saying you wanna approve it. You wanna approve it, why?
Let's take, I have examples, but you just said, don't talk specifics, but let's take.
Let's take a theoretical example. Already addressed. Like, it's been a case from a year ago, two years ago.
So if it has, if it has thirty-five thousand contiguous uplands, it has sixty thousand three hydrogyne soils and exposed ledge, it has eighty thousand of the lot, and you show that you can meet the grading to get to the lot, what are you denying it on? What what is your reason to say no?
Uh, in.
It complies with the regulations. You have no right to say no. That's the issue. Change your regulations.
John, we're talking about a specific example. I can tell you why I think it wouldn't pass. But then we talk about specifics, would you tell me I can't do? So, either let me talk about that specific example or not, but don't, don't tell me I haven't got the.
You can't do it, you can't do it if I'm.
So I, I can tell you, I have exam, I have reasons why.
Well, what, like, so if you wanted to use something for an example, what I would look at is the, um, the one that is in the village district that they went in and got relief for, that's, uh, like, behind the the green yellow farmhouse, that's like a two-unit structure and then two individual lots. Like, if you look at that, without the relief that they got, you could never, you you wouldn't have the frontage and you couldn't do what they wanted to do.
Without the zoning relief, you couldn't have done it.
You couldn't have done it, but they went to the Z B A and the Z B A granted them relief. Because their argument was, oh, we're gonna do this townhouse development. But why did they not do the townhouse development? And I think the the real answer on that is, when you looked at what they needed for road, road frontage, turnouts, signage, uh, mailboxes, it was gonna become way too cost prohibitive to do it. But to make it a driveway, as opposed to an actual road that met all standards, significant change on that. This, it, the, like, so when you start looking at, how do you pick and choose on that? You have to find a way to scale it back so that their options become a little more limited than that, or, as Ron is alluding to, they have to go spend significant money to to make the project work.
Well, no, I think, I think for me, what I'm saying is, we may request it. So if we see something we don't like, we can ask for additionals. They may present a, 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 a plan, a yield plan that we like, but if they don't, we should be, we should have the option to say, prove it to them.
You, you can't be subjective like that. You have to go by, we are, we are here.
Have to go by the regulations that you have in your.
We are charged with upholding the regulation as it is, black and white. That's it.
I agree with it, but let's.
The Z B A gets to play in the gray, not us.
But the conceptual plan, let's say the conceptual yield plan they do. If you, if that's your basis for allowing the density, shouldn't be that, shouldn't that be something we would actually approve? That we would actually approve, or that they would actually do. It would, they would do it. That, that's, it's a reasonable plan that would actually, they would actually have that option to do. They would, they would actually do that plan. I think, I think that to be, if you're, if you're gonna allow people to present fantasy plans that base their density off of that, I don't think we're doing, I don't think we're doing our job.
I, I don't disagree with the whole fantasy plans idea, but then you change the rules so that they're not fantasy plans.
Be addressed to make it work. So if you're, if you had regulations that, okay, so like we have the thousand-foot dead end. You're gonna show three thousand-foot dead end that complies with the regulations. If you want it to be five hundred feet dead end, all of a sudden they couldn't do that. They'd have to make a loop road going through. So then that changes the whole thing on their layout. So, but the yield plan, if it's designed to follow what our traditional subdivision is by our regulations, then it still meets it. But so Andy's point is, if you change the regulations so that type of design wouldn't work, because you have that right now, because you're in your legislative role, not where you're doing, you know, changing rules. You have a chance to do this as part of your legislative role. When an application comes in front and you're in your judicial role, you have to look at the regulations and say, does it comply and does it not comply? And that's black and white. But now you're in that legislative role, you can make some changes, but you would have to make changes that applies to everybody, not just the ones I like and don't like.
Right. I've voted yes on a lot of items that I have held my nose on because I don't like the way the regulations.
I've done that too. I mean, I voted no on ones I like and I voted yes on ones I don't like. Because you follow the rules. But I think that we're getting fantasy yield plans, and I think there should be a way to stop them.
You address.
You would have to change the regulations.
Yeah.
Which I'm suggesting, that's what I'm suggesting here. We put a, we put a, the plan's not only gonna be something you can draw on paper, it's gotta be something that in market conditions is actually feasible. Current market is actually.
But market condition is subjective.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not in our regulations. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't see, it's very subjective. That's.
Well, market conditions, you'd have somebody say, lots are coming with, the road back to this, the road back to these, these lots is a million dollars, but the, but the, but the market value of the lots is only half a million. It's clearly, it clearly wouldn't be done. You should, you shouldn't be allowed to put that in the yield plan. It's, you know, if the lots are only worth a half a million and the road back to those lots is a million, why are we, why are we allowing that as a, as a yield, as a yield plan calculation?
Because it complies with the regulations. That's, that's the point.
No, 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 I'm talking, so we change, is that something we wanna, I'm talking about changing the rules to, should we allow that and should we change the language so it doesn't happen? It's my point, John. Not that, but not that the rules say that. We're talking about changing the rules.
No, I, I get what you say. And and changing the rules to that market feasible plan?
That's subjective right there.
As a regulation that's black and white, how do you do that? That's the problem. Like, like Andy says, it's subjective. You're gonna have something in your regulations that complies with, doesn't comply. You can't have this objective thing where, well, I, I don't like how yours is, so yours doesn't comply, but I like yours, so it does comply. You can't do that. That's what you can't do. That's.
Well, we can, we can request things that over twenty, over twenty years, we can require, we can find a natural assessment. There's plenty of things that are discretionary for the planning board.
If, Ron, if three years ago, somebody had told you they were gonna build a residential neighborhood back here with a town hall and a bunch of other buildings, and, oh, by the way, we're gonna sell a house up there for one point one five million dollars, you would have looked at them and thought they were out of their tree.
It cost over a million dollars just to do the work on one twenty-five, never mind building this road all out. But they're selling them lots high enough that it works. So you say it's not markedly feasible because it would cost a million dollars for them roads and them lots aren't worth it. Five years from now, those lots might be worth that.
Well, but you're doing the work now and, and you're making a business decision now whether I would do.
But that's what they're doing.
No, no, I'm saying that, but that, when you, when, if they were doing a real plan, they would do that calculation.
But this is still, this falls in the same way. It's a conservation subdivision.
If I'm not doing a yield plan.
Get rid of conservation subdivisions.
If I'm, if I'm doing, if I'm not doing a yield plan, I'm doing an actual subdivision, I would do all those calculations. I would decide whether to do the road or not, with the value of the loss. You do that as part of your, a, a normal construction plan, a subdivision anyway.
But the reason you do get, do the conservation subdivision is because of what you save by the tighter density and the cost to build the infrastructure.
Well, the density comes from the yield plan, and if that's a fantasy, then you're getting higher density that should be allowed based on reality.
Then the way you fix that is you change the regulation so you can't get that density.
Why do we keep, I'm talking about changing the regulations. Why do we keep, we should change, we're here talking about changing the regulations.
Because the density, what, the, the, the lot size drives the density, which saw, which is, which is a black and white correlation.
So if you have a hundred, instead of eighty thousand square feet, you have a hundred.
Right, but that's gonna affect every other subdivision, whether it's a conservation subdivision, whether it's one you like, whether it's got a long road or a short road, whether it's all roadfront lots. Once you make that change, that affects everything. It doesn't just affect that.
Right, but and, but what it also does is if we, like, you look at, like, what's gonna be built, the number of units that are built, it's gonna, it's gonna shrink that down and it's gonna create more conservation land, which theoretically means the cost of that land as a whole should actually, um, control the, the tax burden that is, is inputted on a community. And then, because it goes to conservation, conservation or the neighborhood, it becomes responsible for the management of that conservation easement.
Depends on who holds the easement.
That's what I said. It, it all comes down, that's why I said it could be either way.
That's why the town actually took ownership of this one, which.
Well, actually, let's, let's do this, then. Run that one by the lawyer, see if there's a problem.
With this language.
Yep.
Okay.
Are you proposing a density increase?
I already tried that last year and it didn't work.
But maybe people are rethinking it.
I will, I will, I will gladly propose it, but I'll tell you, I've already been very clear and transparent.
Oh, no more new things.
No more new things.
I will do it as a, um, petition warrant article.
Signing that.
Okay. I, I tried it last year and I got hosed on the final day of voting and I, I, and that's not a, a zing at anybody, it's just, it's the reality of what happened and my objective is not to have that happen again, because I firmly believe that if you look at it, people will support what I'm presenting.
Can we move, on that note, can we move on to signs?
So we're, we're clear on the contiguous things that we.
I think so.
You can't take all these little blobs.
I think so.
Use that. They have to be connected. We all agree on it.
Yeah.
Contiguous to me means connected.
Is to me, too.
That one, we've already moved on from that one. This was something totally different.
No, 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 I'm just, we're recapping here.
No, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
You're all good.
For now.
Next meeting when you decide whether to.
October.
Approve it or not, yeah.
So, um, some of the, these are also brought up by Ron, so I don't mean to overstep you, Ron, if you mind.
Which one you're talking about?
So I'm, I'm going for first to talk about amending section twenty point two point four, the location of signs, to completely take out, um, twenty point two point four parentheses one. Um, and then amend the twenty point two point four parentheses one. Um.
Because what it says on that now is, no part of any sign shall be located in or over the public right of way.
Yeah.
And they're small temporary signs. You were talking about having it interfering with the travelway or something. I remember the discussion, but I'm not sure how you wanted to write it.
I was, no, this is the best, the way that we went over it. Staff went over it to address your.
It was a petition, I could go with sign over this. That's why I put it in here.
Yeah.
Um, to me, I, to you, we're kind of, the biggest problem on one twenty-five, and we haven't got authority under the state to deal with that issue. So for me, that's a, that's a background thing.
Right.
Wow, but on our town roads, if someone puts up a graduation sign, they put up a sale sign, they, um, put up, um, yacht sale sign, those are all in the right of way so people can see them.
We're just taking them out of the right of way for.
So right now, our regulation says, even your temporary signs, it says, no part of any sign shall be located over the public, um, right of way. And then in the other section, twenty point two point five one also says, shall not be within the state or towns right of way.
Let me press, take that out.
I'm saying, John, that, that was my, my recommendation.
Just take those sections that says the right of way completely out and not even have them in there?
Yeah, that, I'm just saying, it didn't come from me. That didn't come from me.
Okay, cool.
So I'm okay with it.
Well, we're okay. I was gonna say, um.
I'm not gonna talk about, because I didn't, I didn't recommend it.
So just as a note, Susan Joyce, um, is not here tonight. She said that she was working with Heath Howard, um, representative, decided to introduce a bill for Barrington. Um.
It's, it's terrible.
Well, not to mention, because they're changing their regulations, and if you look at that whole law about regulating signs based on content, that proposed change was a hundred percent based on content. I think when it goes to the state's attorney general, he's gonna say, you can't do that.
It doesn't comply with Reed versus Thomas Gilbert. John's saying. The other thing it doesn't do, Vanessa, is the problem is, the town, the town can only take signs down if they obstruct traffic, they're, they're a safety hazard. So if the signs are up, outside the period, town personnel aren't authorized to do that. They're only authorized to take down signs for safety reasons. You can put this in, it doesn't solve a damn thing. You gotta give the local, you gotta give local authorities the, the authority to enforce the regulations, which you don't, they don't have now. So.
So just so we can keep moving with our regulations, the regulation says, signs shall not cause any traffic hazard or any nuisance. If you leave that in there and then take out the rest of it, and shall not be placed within a state or town right of way. If you took that, shall not be placed in the towns right of way, then you still have the thing about the, doesn't cause a traffic nuisance. So all those little signs that people put out there all the time now become legal signs instead of being illegal signs.
Yeah, but the thing, the thing that the representative's talking about.
That's a different thing. That's a whole different.
That, that change does not help us one bit.
No.
It doesn't help us a bit.
But we're trying to deal with our regulations tonight.
With Reed versus Thomas Gilbert, number one.
Thank you, John. What, we're talking about this right here?
We're trying to deal with our regulations tonight.
I did, I'm sorry.
Thanks for nothing, Vanessa. Thanks for nothing, Vanessa.
You're all right.
So I guess if, everybody's got their book open. So if you go with twenty point two point four parentheses one. Says no part of any sign should be located in or over the public right of way. And then there's a word except if you took that right out and then left the rest of it.
I thought we're taking the whole thing out.
Well, the other part says, um, oh yeah, you take the whole thing out because the rest of it's about traffic control. But then, uh, one on twenty point two point five one, you would keep that first section in that says signs shall not cause a traffic hazard or any nuisance, right?
Then take out that second.
Yeah.
Part.
I think that's what everybody had discussed and we had. That way, all these little signs that people put out on a regular basis. When, when you get over two hundred complaint, or two hundred violations sent to you for those little type of things, it's like, come on, you're kidding, right? But it isn't, it's reality.
So can, is there a way to address that by saying, uh, like celebratory sign, something like, and, and to codify that?
I don't think so.
Well, we've got the temporary signs, which are under the six square feet. So if they do the temporary sign and they keep it under that six square feet, they can put them out there. And they always end up going in the right of way because most of the right of ways, especially, you know, are so far back, you would have to put the sign in the woods where no one could see it to have it on your property. So that's the reason for the thing in the right of way.
On their property anyway. So it's actually their property.
Wow, but it's, it's their property, but the town, this regulation says the right of way. It doesn't say on your property. It says it can't be in the right of way. So even if the right of way, you own the, in the land, this regulation says you can't put it there.
So even if you nail it to the tree in the right of the way, it's still in the right of way. So it's still not.
Yeah, that's what the issue is. It's your tree, it's your tree on your property, but you can't do that.
Yeah, it could take it out because it's, it's actually their property in many cases. So I think taking it out.
Yep.
All right.
Moving on. Next, um, new definitions to add to Article nineteen. Um, we were gonna end the definition of a structure to add generators. Now, now there was some, um.
HVAC units.
The HVAC unit.
That's on, that's on my list.
That's already in the definition on the structures and some of the stuff that's already allowed.
But, um, remember we talked about before about.
You look at my number, my number, well, number five, I think it's the language. This is your suggestion, John. I think it addresses what you, you wanted to do.
The, the thing is, the five feet, the five feet from the structures, which five, which structure are you talking about? The neighbor's structure? Yeah, I mean, the structure of the house. I mean, that, what's, what's the five feet? That's, I guess, I'm not.
From the, it's, it's servicing, it's servicing a property. So it's, it's from that structure obviously.
Which structure on the property?
You can't have a generator within ten feet of a window where we're doing.
Well, you, you can, but you, you can't put them over, you can't put them under the door, under the window.
It has to do with openings, but you can be, some of them now, the way the casings are made, you can be like eighteen inches, two feet off the building because it has that thermal protection. So it can be off the building. But you still get the five feet that you have to be from the opening that would let.
Probably five feet from the opening?
Maybe it is ten. I, I thought it was five, but I can look it back up. But anyways, there's a distance from the opening that it can be opened. Because of the carbon monoxide going back into the ice.
Doors and windows.
Oh yeah, I think you're right. It is things that the gas thing is five feet. The gas is five feet from the opening.
And.
Anything below.
So I couldn't do it because I have windows. I have a raised cellar. All windows. And part of it's with the deck. I couldn't go under the deck, so I had to.
Had to be more than five feet away.
Change five feet, I don't care.
Well, I mean, why haven't, so right now, it doesn't, like your heating systems, your cooling equipment, all that other stuff, it doesn't say that it has to be within five feet of a structure. It just, um, it's exempt from setbacks. So you could just put generators.
Oh, you could cross out the five feet if you want to. I mean, it just seemed to me putting a wave, if you're gonna not let them go to, not subject to setback, they should be relatively close to the house.
Yeah, but, well, heating and cooling equipment is already exempt from setbacks by rights now. You wrote HVAC. But we're gonna add the generator in that same section. I thought was what it was. Without, without having a dimension that it has to be so close to a building.
Take out that. I don't care. I, I was, I was trying to do, you mentioned this, I just put it.
Well, I, I mentioned it because a lot of people have issues trying to get generators on their property and sometimes you lose power and it's like days before you get it back and.
Oh, I agree. So we'll cross out the five feet.
No problem. Where, where are we concerned with it?
What's the issue? Well, right now it has to be setback. So a generator has to be thirty feet from your property line or forty feet from the road in the front.
Or you have to get relief.
Or you can go to the zoning board for relief. And they go to the zoning board on a pretty regular basis and the zoning board keeps granting the variance because it's reasonable, because you can't make it fit on the property. So if you have a regulation that's constantly being relieved, you're supposed to change the regulation.
So if you put a shed right on my property line.
Yes, you can.
To two hundred square feet.
You can.
For the.
But your generator can't.
Which, which.
That's what I wanna change.
Which honestly, like, I don't know if I have a huge issue with that because if I'm the guy that lives next door and my house is close to the property line and they stick a generator wadded right in there between it, and now I gotta listen to their generator run.
Listening to yours, Ron, if theirs is running.
Yeah, but mine's running on the other side of the house. So it's not impacting me. But mine meets setbacks.
You'd be bothering with the loose.
Well, that's why, that's why.
Ends up facing the other direction.
Putting as close to the house as possible. It should, you know, it shouldn't be.
Well, you could put that as close to the house as possible and then.
That's good.
Now you could do that without putting a dimension in there. Then it's all based on, some generators can be two feet off the house, but other ones can't be because of the way their openings are. So if you make the statement as, um, to be as close to the building as possible, yeah.
Is that the change I'd go for?
That makes sense.
Right. Because I mean, they're like, I look at, I got a property and I'm like, I don't want it close to my house, so I'm gonna move it right over to the edge of the property line and it's really close to my neighbor's house who's close there, then that's where you.
I'll fix him for getting the variance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, next one.
Two AM every Saturday.
Kind of like going back to the, the farm, fine, the defined farm business. Um, I mean, trying to go back and forth at NHMA about it, talk to John, put in force John about it a little bit. Um, if we wanted, we already have agricultural use. Um, if we wanted to find, like you're saying, farm business, then you'd be defining agriturism.
Have a definition for that too, right?
So what the issue was.
Definition bringing that up.
Yeah. So my understanding of what the issue is, is at what point is it no longer an agricultural business and it should just be a regular business use? That was because of stuff that was gonna. So we're trying to get a clear answer. Is it, if they use more than half the property or is it more than half of their revenue is generated? So let's say you have a farm and you've got a building on there that you rent out for functions and that building generates three quarters of your money. But ninety percent of the farm is used for agricultural purposes. Is it still agricultural business and that has to be, it's an accessory, even though it generates most of your pay? So where's the fifth, because it says that the, the substantial amount still has to come from agriculture. Substantial amount of land, substantial amount of the income, and we've been running it by the attorney. You know what we got for a straight answer?
No straight.
We haven't got it yet. Yeah. So.
Cause they changed the.
You know what the attorney's are good with? Taking your money and that's.
They also said local zoning cannot be overly.
Right, so that's, right. Well, yeah, but it does say, but it does say that the, it still has to be, agriculture still has to be a substantial part of it. So what is substantial?
That's the question.
Right, but we can't get a straight answer. So, you know, and I think that was the issue this board was kinda dealing with and trying to figure out, is it revenue? Acres of land? I mean.
And if they live on the farm and they have a homestead kitchen, which means not state sanctioned kitchen, they have listed products that can make up to fifty thousand dollars a year income and not have to get a license to do that.
You know what else you can do by the state law? You can have housing for all your employees. So if you've got six employees, you can put six houses on the same lot and you don't have to go for site review or anything. You're allowed to have them as agricultural use, straight up.
More trouble than it's worth.
Well, I mean, that, that's why I think you gotta define what's agricultural.
No, but you, you can't, you can't go against what the state statute says though. That's where the issue is. So.
But you have to, you have to have some definition of what, what becomes a, what defines a, a farmer business, a farm business. I think we have nothing right now. But we have, it's unclear. It can be revenue, it can be land. I mean, I think it's got, RSA for, have a farm stand, it's gotta be a percentage of revenue.
Yeah, for, for the farm stand.
They pick it on revenue. So I think we gotta go on, I think the most reasonable thing is to go on revenue.
So fifty percent of more of the revenue generated has to be agriculture or else it's no longer agriculture? So that, that's, I think, and that, that.
Right.
I'm not even sure if that's legal. That's what we've been trying to ask for the attorney.
And in all fairness, the, the objective out of this is to keep, if we're really looking at this, you want to have farms, like you want that there. And, and, and there is no better example, and I can use it because it's not a case before us. It's like, if you look at the peach farm and the impact of the late frost we had this year, they had no peaches. Which theoretically would mean if you're talking revenue, they didn't generate any revenue off of their peaches because they didn't have any peaches to sell. So what they had was their rental of their space.
They kept them in.
But if you do it on avenue, then they wouldn't be able to have that as part of their agriturism as a cultural use. That's the issue.
The lane would be sold for six house lots.
And then, and I would much rather have it as, I, like, I prefer being able to go up the road and get myself fresh, fresh peaches.
But am I gonna, am I gonna send those same benefits to, uh, somebody that has some property and has a herb garden? Are we gonna give them all the same benefits of a real farm business? I have a herb garden. I'm a, I'm, I'm agricultural. I want agriturism. I want to have this. I want to have that. I want to have six houses on the property. Cause I have a herb garden.
But no, no, no. Cause if you took, look at, listen to what John said, the housing is for people who work the land.
Right, it has to be employees.
For your employees. Well, and there should even be defined as farmhand employees.
I got, I got, I got one person doing each herb.
Right.
They roll the lawn, they turn the bushes, they tend my pool.
What I'm hearing is we should not do a definition of agriturism at the time.
Shall we wait till we get a real, true legal opinion before we deal with it?
Yeah.
I think we're just, you're.
Pitch it to the lawyer.
You're, yeah, you're otherwise, you're opening Pandora's box.
Well, that's three or four years down the road. That's good enough.
Um, so the next topics, I'm gonna hand over to Ron if there's anything else you wanted to discuss because you had a question about the permitted restoration of certain non-conforming structures.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with those.
Okay. And, and I don't have anything else other, um, that, the October seventeenth meeting.
On this sheet right here.
Conservation Commission will be coming.
On this sheet right here, my stuff. I'll, I'll go through the ones that are less, I'll skip the, set the inspection thing. Um, we did have a discussion somewhere about sheds and limiting the number of sheds on a property.
Yes.
So I just put language to that. And it's under, it'd be under, you know, zone definitions of structures. And.
We got that last.
I guess, like, you know, is that something we wanna support or not?
When you say enclosed trailer, is that like a, a forty foot trailer that a tractor trailer would pull?
No, I'm talking about any kind of trailer. You know, if you're trying to do storage sheds, I put a trailer around there. Now I, I use it as a storage shed.
Great.
So, but it's on, remember, it's unregistered. So the, the, they're not, they're not using it as a trailer. They're using it as basically a storage.
So it just sits there and.
It's a, it's a shed, it's a shed with wheels. We, we wanna limit those.
I do want, well, I don't want any of them.
Well, I hear I'm limiting them to some extent. So you wanna change your language, you can change your language. But.
So that, I guess what we're coming down to is that two hundred square feet technically is part of those trailers, storage trailers are over that two hundred square.
Right.
Um, so if you have the smaller ones and they're under two hundred square feet, without having a definition, because it says, right now, I think it says, um, sheds or similar use or something like that is how it's actually worded.
Yeah, we changed a little bit after our discussion from last meeting.
Cause I understand that whole, so.
And I don't know where this came from. I mean, some, I, did you bring it up, John? Or somewhere it came up. That's why I wrote it down. It's not my thing.
Okay. So what our regulation says now, that's exempt from the setback and having that, it said, any one-story detached accessory structure used for tool or storage sheds, playhouses or similar uses provided the floor area does not exceed two hundred square feet. So because of the way that's written, those storage trailers kinda fall into that whole thing because it's kind of an accessory structure. And it can be used for, and it says, uh, similar uses. So if they're using it for storage and tools or a playhouse, then it says, or, or similar uses. So you would have to have something clear that says storage containers aren't. You have to put something in there to make it clear that storage trailers, isn't that similar use if you're trying to keep storage trailers out of it.
Right.
Well, this, I was just trying to limit the number of sheds and stuff like that.
Right, that was where you had.
That's, that's where I, and you gotta talk about something different, John.
Right.
This is just, do you wanna limit the number of sheds and, and storage going on on property?
I have that.
Or not?
Yeah, I have that.
Absolutely what it comes down to.
So do you just.
From our last, from our last meeting, we discussed that.
Okay.
Define your storage and your shed as stick-built construction.
Well, what about when they get one of those metal things that you buy that you put on there, like.
Well, we have definition for sheds already. This question is, do you wanna limit the number?
No, we don't.
About the number. Not, not so much the definition, it's the number. This, this, this limitation of three.
The only definition you have is the two hundred feet. No, we're talking two totally different topics.
Yeah, so maybe we should get one at a time.
Yes.
This is just, on the definition that John read, those things are allowed without any limit.
Right.
And all this is doing is saying, do you want to limit the number on a piece of property? All this is saying.
So the conversation, when Ron was saying, we have two, you can have two straight up. And then you can have one additional, one additional one for each acre of land you have over an additional, which, let's say some farmer has, he puts one of those lean-to things up and he's got his cows out in the pasture. He's got another pasture where he has a thing and they're just, the sheep go in it or whatever, you know. Do you wanna limit it so he can't have those structures out there, but he's got fifty acres of land? Is it reasonable to have that?
I think we discussed that the last one meeting.
On a, on a two-acre lot, do you wanna put a, a cap on how many?
Right, so if you have the cap, so if you have the cap of two, and then you can have one for each additional acre, then you're not limiting the guy that has that kind of use. But yet at the same time, every subdivision you go in, you don't see, or sheds are lined up side by side, one inch apart. We're, we're getting, we're getting multiple ones right now that, because I, I just say can't contact and they say, how, how close can they be? Just can't touch. Can't touch, so.
So you could theoretically line your property line with sheds.
I got one guy that's got four of them lined right up side by side.
Between them.
And he's got administrative zoning permits for all of them.
If, if you did one of them, that, that would be subject to. Cause it's over two hundred square feet. But if you don't, if you, if you put a bunch of them or well over two hundred feet side by side, it, it's exempt. So the question here is, do you wanna limit those?
Yes, let's, first of all, let's limit.
Right. So the, so the two, the two per lot and then one for each additional acre of your lot? And that was Ron's suggestion.
Ron has three.
Was it three? I thought it was two.
I, oh well, I, I added, it was two, John, but I added enclosed, enclosed trailers and I added, um.
Let's just use the word sheds for now.
Or your sheds?
Get definitions of.
Well, I have shipping containers too. You wanna use.
We had, I have, I have shipping containers. So we, yeah, we talked a lot about this at the last zoning one. But I do have all that sectioned out, like the shipping containers and the sheds.
Okay, well.
The definition for shed is.
You're going to take out.
To three though, instead of two.
The problem, the thing I'm concerned about is, let's say, you know, I'm gonna do, like, if I bring in an, an old beat-up closed trailer, I want to use that for storage.
Right.
It's basically a shed.
By the way, our definition is right now, yes.
Nope, you are incorrect. If it's an old beat-up enclosed trailer, as long as it's registered, it's an old beat-up enclosed.
Unregistered, unregistered.
Yep.
Then, cause it, cause it says, or similarly used for harm, can, could tools or other similar uses. So if it's used for that use, then it needs that definition that I read just a few minutes ago as a container.
It's a big shed.
Well, no, it's under two hundred square feet. It's not a big shed. It's a, it's.
Oh, under two hundred square feet.
Yeah, so if you have a smaller one under two hundred square feet, by the way this definition reads, you could use those storage containers now, but he said nothing on the commercial. The commercial, because our regulation says, um, any non-residential development needs site review. And if you read development, it says anything placed or erected. So that's why the commercial stock has to come in for site review to have them, but residential doesn't.
Ask you a question. What, like, it, what, and it's just because it creates confusion. We have accessory building and then structure.
Where is this?
So if I look in the definitions, there's a struct, we have the definition of structure.
Oh.
But then in our definitions, we also have accessory building, which just defines a detached building, the use of which is customary incidental and subordinate to that of the principal building and that is located in the same lot.
That's there because if you don't have a house, you can't put a garage on your lot. You have to have a primary use is, is what is your residential home. And then you can have an accessory structure because you can't have an accessory structure unless you have a primary use. And then if you go to your table of uses under accessory uses, that's where it talks about garages and those are the accessory use. You can't put a garage on your lot as a standalone building without a residential use.
It wouldn't be a residential use if you just put a garage on.
No, but that's what I'm saying. It's not allowed. Cause if you go to your table of uses.
I'm just saying it wouldn't, how could it be allowed anyway? It's not a residential use.
It's a residential garage. But the thing is, it's listed under an accessory use. Private garages are listed under accessory use. So you have to have a primary use to have an accessory use. So you have to have a residential house there. Someone can't just take their lot and put a garage up and say, I'm using it for storage now. I'm gonna build a house later unless they go to the ZBA and get permission to do so. That's the reason why you have that other definition of an accessory structure.
Well.
Cause you have to have a primary use. That's what that definition's.
But you're talking about use. This is accessory building.
Right.
As opposed to accessory use. Accessory use defines a structure use that is subordinate in purpose to the principal use. As opposed to accessory use, accessory use defines a structure use that is subordinate in purpose to the principal use, contributes to the comfort, convenience and/or necess, necessity of the principal use, and is located on the same lot as the principal use. But the accessory building just, it is not, like, you refer to use and the structure or use that is subordinate in accessory use. Should that, should that reference the accessory building then? Or should accessory building be accessory structure? Because otherwise, you're, you're conflicting your two. Because like, if I read structure, then I go back to accessory, you're saying, structure refers to accessory use, but really what you're talking about is the building that's on there, and if you look at accessory use, it says a structure or use. The accessory use is the use, not the structure of it, the accessory building would be the component that goes on as the structure, and it should say accessory structure, not accessory building. Sorry, I'm being semantical, but it's.
Yeah, so.
Clears up the regulation.
Okay, so the garage would fit under the structure. That recreational use would fit under a use, because that's an accessory, use accessory has recreation. So if you look on that table for recreation, then it says you can have that for up to a hundred and eighty days if you have sanitation on site. With the note, but that's a use. Because of the garage. Oh, I see that, because it says accessory, use accessory in the definition, it doesn't say.
Right, if you look at accessory use, it says a structure or use, but accessory building references a very specific purpose, why even have it?
Yeah, yeah, right, I, I, I guess I agree. Now that I understand what you're trying to say, I agree, I, I don't see what it says or any purpose. Because the accessory use describes the structure already.
So you could eliminate that, and it, and it eliminates one more piece of fodder that creates confusion in the regulation, that somebody can use as a tool against us, as opposed to a clear.
I have quite often, people come in and say, I disagree with you, and I lay out exactly why I feel that way, and we go to the zoning board, the zoning board says, yeah, that makes sense, but they, they don't have to agree with me.
Right.
You know, you can peel my decision.
I don't agree with you, I don't agree with you a lot, but I'm like one for twenty, but I still don't. Would it make?
I'm like one for twenty, but.
I'm just, for clarification, would it make sense just to, to scratch accessory building?
Building out?
Yes.
Completely, or just to say this is accessory structure? And take out.
It just refers to a.
Take out the structure.
The accessory, if you leave accessory use and you leave the structure in there, because the definition says use accessory, so that way, this would match that.
Right.
And just take out the whole.
And then take out the accessories.
Accessory building. And then, now you're referring to the structure, and the use becomes the subordinate piece of that. Coming back to my thing.
Well, let's, let's make a decision, well, wait, we, we need to make a decision on stuff, we go one, then we go the other, and we don't.
This is where I lose you guys.
Because it all connects together, that's the problem.
So, do we, so right now, what we're talking about accessory buildings, everybody happy taking that out, or you want to leave it?
Or like, merge the two into one definition under accessory use? Kind of what I'm hearing. It says structure, but maybe.
Because it says a structure or use that is subordinate, so I think it already.
Would you put like a detached building structure?
I don't think you need to, do you?
You don't think so?
Especially when you go here, because you look at use accessory, it says private garages. And that's the structure I think they were trying to describe.
Yeah.
If you wanted to have private garages as a straight-up use.
And taking the silence as, conference, yes.
Sure.
Okay.
More like acquiesce.
So now to get back to Ron's, to make a decision.
Okay.
Right, which should hopefully clarify some of that.
Also looking forward to you agree, disagree, or you want to make changes in language, that's where I'm at. You know, agree, disagree, change the language, that's, that's.
At least you don't go back to signs.
We're done with signs.
So you're, really what you're trying to address is is the whole shipping container part of.
No, there's two parts, the first part we're on now is, how many sheds can you have on the same lot?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with limiting that, I agree.
So that, we have the three plus the one, everybody, so that one's, okay, we're done with it, stop.
Okay, check, write that down.
Yeah, we're done, all right, so now we're going to the, the.
If the word shed, shed is confusing. That some people think a shed is also a shipping container.
We don't have a definition of shed in our zoning.
You have an accessory structure or accessory use. That is your defining.
Do we limit what an accessory structure is, so it does not?
Well, so you might want to go back, so you might want to go back on the structure, where it says, one-story detached accessory structure used for tools, you know, storage sheds, playhouses or similar uses, so it doesn't describe what it is, it describes the use. So if you took a s, storage container, and it was part of that use, then that storage container is allowed because it's similar use, so that's what you would have to change if you don't want storage containers.
They're good playhouse.
There you go, they're a good play, great, a good place to put your tools, but it says similar uses, it talks about uses, it doesn't talk about the construction.
Right.
So you, instead of saying, limit the number of sheds, you want to say accessory structures? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, no, he's trying to figure out.
We're done with it.
Yeah, so, so I, I think, what John's trying to do is, he's trying to get away from storage trailers as being allowed as part of this structural, this use. So I think you have to define someplace that a storage container is not a structure, or something like that, you could, if you did that, then they couldn't say that it's a similar use. Because it's not, not a structure. Because it says, one-story detached accessory structure, if it's not a structure, then it's not that one-story detached accessory structure that has similar uses. That you want, I'm not sure how to write it, but you know, I'm trying to come up with an answer to what you're saying.
Three-foot trailer.
Well, that's over two hundred square feet, so.
No, if, if, if it's with the, with the, with the tractor, the this storage unit itself is like eight by tw- twenty, right?
That is.
Yeah, but if you take a, but if you take a box trailer.
Yeah, I'm talking about a box trailer, you say trailers, I'm thinking of a big.
So you could theoretically, theoretically, you could put an eight-by-twenty-five trailer, and that would meet, that would be right at the limits of your two hundred square feet.
Correct, if you've got one bigger than that, the box trailer is like you're talking about, those would need, if they're not registered, they would need a building permit for it, and I couldn't give them a building permit for one of them, because it doesn't meet the building code.
Okay, so problem solved.
Well, the thing is, when someone puts it on their lot, if it's got a license plate on it, it's legal, if they don't take the license plate, but if you're, if you're trying to make people understand they can't have that on their property, then you should have it black and white written in the regulation, not say, oh, it's over two hundred square feet, so you can't have it, I mean, that's, and, it's almost like an assumption.
Right.
It's not a regulation that's there that people see.
If you're trying to scratch it, how to define.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this, you call, you call a, a trailer a nonstructure, just to make sure that it's clear, it's not a structure. Because I get these things where people come in and tell me they're gonna get these shipping containers, and they're gonna make a house out of them, and it's like, not without an engineered design, you're not.
So in definitions, we could put the official name for a tr, tractor trailer or thing, that's what we're talking about.
But if they're registered, they're a vehicle.
Right. Unregistered. Okay.
I know, um, berries came in when I was on the planning board, and they put two of them out there for selling some of their products. And they actually came and got site review to park them there, and they said that's what they were, and they put them there for that storage type thing. They're not structures that required a building permit, they are exempt from setbacks, because they're road vehicles, they just aren't registering them anymore, and they got approval from the planning board to set them you know, on that location, and they put like a little loading dock, because they sold grain and stuff like that there at one. Should I move on?
Yes, please.
All right, so we're not gonna fix that one, we're not gonna let that go away.
No.
I, I'm not sure how to fix it, that's.
We had changes.
I, I think.
I think your only way to change it is to go to, um, a, a, like, build, essentially like a frame structure, to define the structure as being something of, um.
I think you had to have something clear, that you can't just pack an unregistered box trailer on your lot, so here's, I went to court on a junkyard. Like, I put box trailers in front of it, so I couldn't see all the junk cars anymore. So when I got to court, the judge said you can't see them because of those box trailers are there, I go, but the box trailers aren't registered, there's more than two unregistered vehicles. The judge determined I couldn't see all the cars behind it, the box trailer's one violation, he dismissed the case. So if a judge is dismissing it, saying, I can't enforce that, a box trailer can't be on the site because it's not registered, and it's junkyard because there's more than two unregistered vehicles, how do you enforce it?
That's why I'm saying, if, if you.
Yes.
Where's the budget? Where's the budget?
Hey, I have money in my equipment budget.
You specifying that the structure is, is of organic mat, organic material or organic type?
Well, what I'm saying, if the judge determined that those things blocking my view were legal to have there to block my view, so there's no violation, how do you write someone up for having one of them on their property as a zoning violation? And have it, you know, how, how do you go to court and win?
Hopefully get a different judge.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, or your rules say, hey, that's not even allowed by the rule, because our, our regulation says it has to be of organic material that meets our, our aesthetic appeal of our neighborhood, or to whatever that is, or our town.
I'm not sure. You can figure out how to write something that the judge is gonna approve it.
Let me get on my last three, because I think they're non-conformal. All right, my next one was a time limit for public comment.
We've talked about the rules of procedure.
Yeah, rules of procedure.
Three minutes.
I say administrative rule, I say in there where it belongs.
Oh.
I'm just saying, do we agree with it? I'm not saying I'm.
Oh, oh, I thought you wanted to change zoning.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
Yeah, I agree to the, yeah.
Do we agree to that?
Yeah, I want to, yeah.
Three minutes, did we agree?
Yeah.
Done. Um, non-conforming structures.
Oh, boy.
Right now, you can replace them only if they get wiped out for some reason.
Well, it says act of God.
Act of God.
So the way I interpret the act of God for the two years, if it's all rotted and falling down, that's technically an act of God. So by the time they take a building that's falling apart, they rip it down, they got two years up to they rip it down to put it back in on that location if it's non-conforming. If they don't put it back in within two years, they would have to go to the zoning board to have that spot vested.
And my question, the reason I bring up the question here is, if I have an old building, let's say it's not rotting, it's not, it's not in danger of falling down, it's not an act of God, can I just take it down and rebuild it in the same footprint? Is, is that something we want to allow or not?
Yeah, because you got expansion, um, non-conforming structures, if you go to five-point-two, it says that you can renovate them, remodel.
Right.
The buildings is, may not be enlarged, expanded, or otherwise altered in a manner that results in said building becoming less conforming. So you're already allowed to do that under five-point-two.
The language that says, this language that says it can't be.
It can't, so what happens is, they don't, this, so that other one on five-point-four, that comes down, the building's gone, it's not there. And if you leave no building there for more than two years, then that vesting goes away.
But you're saying, I can, I can replace it right now.
Under five-point-two.
Yes, on the five-point-two, okay, I, that was my question.
Right. And then. It may continue so long as it remains otherwise lawful.
Okay, I missed that, so I was just saying.
But that, but that five-point-four is just because if, if it goes away, your best thing doesn't last forever, is what it says.
I told you that, it says, eh, eh, can you rebuild it without an act of God, that was, that was my question, and you're saying we can.
All right, yeah.
So, okay, then my last one was, um, in a subdivision of ten, of ten or greater lots, are we gonna allow them to create a, create backlots?
Right now, it says you can do a maximum of two.
Yeah, yeah, it says you can do a maximum of two, you know, and my question is, you know, we have a frontage requirement, you know, why are we letting them create backlots on a ten, a, a pretty big subdivision? And just throwing it out there for discussion, basically.
All right, so here's reality, they keep a big lot in the front, they come back and they do the backlots later, what's the difference?
If you, well, backlot's gonna be.
You keep that frontage, you keep your two hundred feet, plus fifty, give yourself ten acres of land, you come back, you've got your front lot and two backlots, you can come in and do a future subdivision, even after that subdivision is done.
I think if you're, if you're creating a lot off the frontage.
That any lot created after a certain point.
I've seen in other towns that you can't do a re-subdivision of some lots within a, like a five-year time period to use the different regulations.
Well, what you're talking about, John, we have a frontage requirement, two hundred feet. If you're creating a lot, or you're creating a lot with fifty square, fifty feet frontage, I'm saying that shouldn't be allowed.
What I'm saying is, unless you take backlot subdivisions out completely, the ice does a subdivision, let's say he does his ten lot or twelve lot subdivision, and his bigger lots, he keeps two hundred and fifty feet of frontage and ten acres of land. He comes back afterwards and says, I got my two hundred for the frontage, I got my fifty feet for my two backlots, he does his two backlots afterwards, what's the difference?
But when he's, when he's, when he's creating those backlots, he's creating, he's creating fifty, fifty frontage, I'm saying, don't allow him to break fifty to the frontage.
So you're saying eliminate backlots completely?
No, 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 I'm saying, the ones that exist, exist, but if you're doing a big subdivision.
They exist anyway.
But what John's saying is, they're gonna go in, do a big subdivision, leaving a big hunk of land, and then they're just gonna come in a year later, and now it's not a big sub, ten lot subdivision.
It's just one, it's one with two backlots.
One lot that's being subdivided into a couple.
But I saw regulations in other towns that said that you can't re-subdivide within a certain time period, I've seen that too. Um, so they give you like a five-year time period or a ten-year time period, so that would hold that up, but that's has nothing to do with backlot things, it has to do with re-subdivision. Because right now, you can only do two backlots, no matter how big your subdivision is.
Yeah.
But then you can come back in the next year and do another lot that you created that were bigger, you can do another backlot subdivision, year after that, you can come in again. That's how our regulations are written now.
But if every single subdivision requires two hundred feet of frontage, wouldn't you eliminate that, John?
No, because if they kept two hundred and fifty feet, you still have fifty feet left to re-subdivide.
Yeah, but we don't allow that then.
Yes, you do, you allow backlots with fifty-foot neck.
No, no, but if it's already been subdivided.
Yeah, but we, we don't have any regulations that says you can't.
You would have to r, write in the regulation that, um, you, you do not allow further subdivision.
Within a certain time period.
Or period after this date.
I don't think you can do that, because if someone, if someone complies with your regulations, can you limit them forever if they comply, especially if the subdivision regs ever change in the future and stuff?
You know what would really solve this? If we changed the lot sizes.
Well, you know, I'm just throwing that out there. Are we open, it sounds like what John's saying is, this'll fly if we have a time limit, so.
Well, I've seen other towns that have a thing to where you can't re-subdivide for a certain amount of time.
So, let's, let's say we include that, that factor in there.
I like that approach to it, because it definitely slows the roll a little bit.
It's not gonna be the same developer playing the game.
Right. Yeah. Or if they are, they're, they're playing the long game.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah, you start going five or ten years out, all of a sudden now they got twenty years invested to try to pull something off, where the other way, like you said, next year I come back and redo it.
Not even next year, they come back three months later, or six months later.
That would be under eleven point two, point four, uh, presses one, I have it wrong here.
No, but I mean, after re-subdivision.
The re-subdivision, would that be like a zoning?
I think it would have to be, I think it would have to be in zoning, because subdivision supports your zoning. So there's, if you put it in subdivision. Yeah, but if you put it in subdivision, no further lots can be created for a certain time period, I think it should go in zoning. Yeah, we can look at what other municipalities have, I think you'll find it's in their zoning, not in their subdivision regulations.
Eleven point two, point four, but that's one, that's for backlots permitted, so you, you probably want to put some language in there.
So reference it, I mean, like, having both lots.
It says two, and you can, you probably just want to add.
Within a ten-year time period or something like that?
Yeah, or lots of less than ten, you know, ten lots, within a ten, with a timeframe, so put it, I think it could fit there.
Five years, have you been agree, five years?
I think five.
Five? What we can do is, we can look up what other municipalities have, and see what they got, and then.
I like the ten, I'm, I'm all about the long game.
And I think the other ones are probably more, you know, what, what do you think, Vanessa, you want to talk about septic inspections, I think? That's kind of a long, a long discussion.
Oh, wait a minute, this is, this thing you're talking about here is in your subdivision, yes, not part of zoning, this is something you guys change without going to zoning. That whole thing that you're.
You're saying to add it to that section.
Yeah, but this is subdivision regulations, you're doing zoning now.
Yeah, but.
That's why I wanted to look it up, it's in the wrong section. Now, we do have backlots in zoning, so what section in zoning where you might want to address that?
Oh, I see.
Okay, your plans are gonna tackle a lawyer.
Backlots page.
Um, septic is kind of a. Lack of patience for one more, this long discussion is that?
Well.
Help Bob's there.
The thing you run into is like the lake association. It could cost their members money. But rules. And at the same time, it wouldn't protect the lake. You get this.
Yeah, I, I agree with it, but I mean, to me, if you're doing a new property, you can't put a septic within seventy-five feet. With, with the right soils.
Right.
Even farther if it's the soil's ungrade. Why am, why am it gonna allow me to add bedrooms and stuff? The septic system doesn't comply with current standards.
Cause the state can waive their own regulations and they do it on a pretty regular basis, I know, because I deal with it.
Yeah, but.
But a lot of these old places don't, don't even have a septic system, just a cesspool.
Are there really that many of those still?
Those are pretty well gone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like, we keep alluding to them, but I just.
One on my road.
Well, once it goes into failure, then it has to come out and they have to have a state design approved one. If they decide to do an expansion, whether it's adding a room or um, even if they're not adding a bedroom, just an expansion of the building. If the septic design is more than twenty years old, they have to get a new design from the state. But the state regulations goes on to say that you don't have to install the new system until the existing one goes into failure.
Right.
So even if they got a cesspool, if it hasn't failed, they're allowed to continue using it, even if they make that into a six bedroom house.
And a seasonal, well, that's where it's like.
But see, that's what the state, I'm just going, but that's DES's rules, and we can't trump DES, it's a state rule.
And, and if it's a seasonal property, the odds of it going into failure are. Low. Just because.
Cause of the low usage.
Yeah, because the usage is, is a limited period of time.
If that seasonal use goes into a full-time use, all of a sudden it goes into better, and that's when they get replaced.
The water level's highest in the summertime, and that's when the use is high for seasonal properties, I think, I've seen them fail in seasonal properties.
And if they fail, then they gotta replace them, by DES's rules.
Come in and they pump.
This also requires, what, pumping it three years, every three years, you have to prove that they're pumped every three years. The Chesterfield rule.
And the, and the stuff you got, another town did, they, they did it through the kind of the public health. Methodology, but they regulate.
They didn't do it in their zoning though.
Also five hundred.
They have a. They do it, they, they.
They did it under the health, you said, so it's under.
That's, that, I forget how the mechanics did it, but they, it's under the. The state clearly allows the public health authority to regulate this, so that's how they did it.
They did it under a public health policy, not under their zoning.
It's a health regulation.
Yeah, that's.
Different than we're zoning.
Well.
We have one?
We do, we do very little with the health stuff, we're not like the bigger cities.
Does town have one?
Yeah, I'm a health officer.
Well, you are.
So, the town, but the towns.
Bigger than Chesterfield.
Well, see, what happens is that towns, a lot of towns, municipalities, they do like their restaurant inspections and stuff like that, the service safe things. The town of Barrington has the state do all those health inspections, they don't have a local officer like some of your other big, bigger municipalities. Cause really, to be an inspector on that, I would have to be service safe certified to even do that. And now, you're taking a guy that's a building inspector and a zoning administrator, where they got stuff, and now you gotta have all this help thing. So usually the bigger cities have a health officer that's hired as a health officer that does that, it's not a combination of jobs. So if you wanna add a eighty thousand dollar a year health officer job, then we could probably do that whole thing to where. We start regulating restaurants, we can have those kind of health rules and that kind of stuff.
Well, this, this is, you know, it doesn't require, since you.
Someone's gotta enforce it and oversee it and.
It's, 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 it's a more complicated thing, for sure. I'm okay with letting it go for the right now, I mean, if.
The state has changed a few things, if you sell late waterfront property, you have to have an assessment done on what you have for a septic system by the full disclosure. Um, there's a couple of other things that they've done to try to regulate stuff around the lakes too.
Yeah, if you do sell waterfront property, you have to. Get it inspected and then it's supposed to disclose it to the buyer, right?
Yeah, full disclosure, yeah, but they don't have to change the system, it's just a disclosure that is out there, so they realize what they're getting into. Um, that's like that, was Andy was talking about a seasonal use. Now, they have a thing for seasonal use and had to show that you, before nineteen seventy-two. That it was used more than nine months a year, so that was a full time, what they consider full time use. And when they first changed them over, you could get like a witness from a neighbor and that kind of stuff. But that's almost impossible to do now, because neighbors in nineteen seventy-two are long gone, or if they're still alive type of deal. So that's that, and that's a state thing about seasonal properties. The town of Barrington doesn't have anything where they regulate seasonal properties. We don't define a seasonal property.
Okay, I, I'm hearing is, is a consensus, kick that down the road. Is that a consensus, Ed?
Yeah, I don't think we'd be prepared to put something on there that's been.
Okay. And that's my list.